30,000 people in the county who got their first dose of either Pfizer or Moderna and never got their second. We're not sure why that is. We're theorizing could be a couple of things. Could be that people had maybe a bad reaction to the first shot or afraid of the second one. It could be that they just don't think they need it. Maybe by the time the second one was due, cases had gone down like they did in June and July. Maybe people thought, ah, forget about it. People, we've been drumming into people's heads, of course, that you waited 21 days after your first shot of this dose and 28 days after your first shot of this dose. And maybe now they're way past those 21 and 28 day markers and they're thinking, well, forget it, it's too late. Not too late. We really want to get people fully vaccinated for their safety, for the safety of their families, their coworkers, and so we can eventually put all of this behind us. So I really just encourage people to do that. BucksCounty.gov is the website for the county. There are, there's a COVID, actual COVID button that gives you information. So we encourage people to check on that. Part of, as we know, the pandemic was the economic impact. Last year, the county launched multiple grants, three Bucks Back to Work Grants and what was called a CHIRP grant, which was a state grant administered through the county. Through the three county programs, we distributed about $27 million to about 1,500 backup singers, I guess, behind me here. Yeah. I wondered why you were smiling. It couldn't be anything I was talking about, having looked behind me. So 1,500 businesses throughout the county, small businesses, got that money. We are launching another fourth round of Bucks Back to Work Grants. We've allocated $5 million. So pay attention in the next couple of weeks through the county website, through county social media. We're going to use, obviously, regular print electronic media as well to try and get the word out to as many businesses as we can. If you're looking for some assistance still, the Bucks Back to Work Grant Round Four is going to be coming very, very shortly. And so we're anxious to get that money into people's pockets, help them pay their rent of their properties, pay salaries, you know, do whatever they need to do. We are also focused on something that I've heard a lot about when I was a supervisor. I'm sure you're here too as local elected officials, which is vacant storefronts. You know, whether it's in a strip mall or if it's on the street, you have a store, that's a commercial property that's vacant and it sits there and it sits there and it sits there. We are building, we're working on building through our planning commission, a countywide registry of vacant store properties, commercial properties, that will be searchable by someone who wants to come in and look for a commercial property that's X square, you know, number of square feet. They'll be able to go to the registry and find it and then know exactly where they are. You know, hopefully sort of a clearinghouse so people can come and make it easier if they want to set up shop somewhere. You know, here's a list of all the vacant properties throughout Bucks County. Where do you want to go? And we'll rely on some help from you to keep us updated on those if you see them. And that's, that's coming up. The other thing to touch on is green energy. The county has made a lot of strides recently toward moving, towards more environmental initiatives. We are one of the only counties in Pennsylvania to adopt the Sierra Club's Ready for 100 initiative. Did that earlier this year to try and commit Bucks County government to moving completely fossil free in the next couple of decades. We also, earlier this year, sent out to all 54 municipalities, a model alternative energy ordinance. This came out of something my experience is as a local elected official. If you wanted to change your zoning ordinance, it's very expensive, it's very time consuming. And so knowing that and also knowing that there were a fair number of municipalities in Bucks that didn't really have anything up to date on their zoning books when it came to property owners, residential or commercial, who were looking for solar panels on their roofs or small scale wind or geothermal. And maybe if the zoning ordinance doesn't cover it, it makes it a little bit more challenging for your staff, for developers, for property owners. Well, what am I allowed to do? You know, because I want to do something, but I don't know what I can do. So I asked our planning commission to draft a model ordinance using all the best practices so that it's something that you're able to take, you're able to take pieces of it, incorporate it into your zoning law if you want to. You can take the whole thing and just put it in there or however you want to do it as a way to update your zoning ordinances so that it's anybody who comes in or a current resident or somebody who wants to come in or a property owner of any type can get an idea of, oh, this is what I'm allowed to do based on the ordinances. This is how high I can go. This is, you know, what I can do in the front yards with setbacks, things like that. And I'd be happy to share that if you haven't had a chance to do it. And our planning commission is more than happy to come out and work with you on any suggestions. They're the ones who wrote it. And, you know, I think it's, it's a good model to use throughout the county. And finally, just touch on the election. We're about two weeks away from Election Day, municipal elections, state judges, but also county and local officials. The mail-in application deadline is next Tuesday. So if you're still interested in getting a mail-in ballot, you can still apply up to next Tuesday. Today was the last day for voter registration. So if you haven't registered by now, you know, it's, you're not going to be able to vote this year. There are 11 drop boxes throughout the county. The closest one to here is Yardley Makefield Library. It is open within, whenever the library is open. You just walk in, there'll be a board of elections employee there, you put your ballot inside, it's inside the building. And as I said, it's, it's going to be open nights when the library is open at nights, it'll be open on Saturdays when the library is open on Saturdays. And that'll be through till 8:00 PM on Election Day. So for anybody that's looking to do that, the mail has been working, not good, very well. Over the past couple of weeks, we've gotten back a lot of mail-in ballots through the mail, the ones that went out. So that's obviously a good sign. But as we get closer to Election Day, people a little nervous about putting it in the mail, hoping it gets there by 8:00 PM on Election Day, the drop boxes are available. There's also one at the Government Services Center in Leavittown at Five Points, if you're interested in that. And finally, I'll end with a plea for anybody who's interested in working at the polls inside on Election Day. The county is always looking for people who want to work inside. You can work a half day, you can work a full day. It is a long day, but, you know, we do, there's some training online, but it is something that, you know, we really can't make elections work if we don't have people working inside to help, you know, sign people in as they come to vote, to help them with machines or any other questions they have. Get about, I think upwards of about $200 for the day. And if you're a student, I know if you're 17 and older, if you have permission from your, I think a little sign off from your, from your principal or somebody at your school to certify that you're, you know, a good kid, then you can, you can work a day if you're 17. So with that, again, I thank you very much for your time. You know, feel free to reach out at any point. I am going to have to apologize for kind of buzzing out here trying to get the falls before, you know, to get to their meeting because I told them I'd get there and do a similar presentation, but I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Before we get into public comment, I just, there's a couple of things. On the agenda, we are going to move up two items to the beginning. We're not going to change their, their numbering in the agenda. So 9W, which is to, a call to a motion to approve the ordinance to levy an earned income tax will be moved up. That will be the first motion on the agenda. And then the second motion on the agenda will be 9J, which is a motion to adopt resolution blank, which is a resolution of the planning commission extending, amending the boundaries of the Marsville Borough Certified Redevelopment Area. Also on the agenda, there were some duplicate motions, 9M and 9N are duplicative, so we're going to combine them and we're just going to read off the first motion. Same thing for 9O, 9P, 9Q, 9R, 9S, and 9T. Those motions will be combined into one motion. Also, due to the large crowd we have tonight, the PA Sunshine Act allows us to only hear from residents and taxpayers for the borough, and that's what we're going to do this evening. I want to acknowledge the Little League and they're cooperating with us and some of their parents are borough residents. I believe they have agreed to let their president speak on behalf of the group. So I'd like to thank them for that. So we're going to move into public comment and the first person up is Molly Rafferty. Can you please state your name and address and then after your address for three minutes?
Molly Rafferty, 123 Delaware Avenue. I came here tonight to speak on behalf of the Roosters of Morrisville. You may or may not know, roosters are a biblical symbol. In Christianity, a rooster's crow at dawn is a reminder of Christians' victory of light over darkness and life over death. It's not a coincidence that roosters crow more on Sundays than any other day. After having a rough day, we may be reminded that tomorrow is another day, right? And if you're blessed to have a rooster nearby, he's the one who reminds you it's a new day or another victory. So the next time you hear a rooster crow, perhaps you should take a moment and thank God for life. Roosters serve a purpose in a flock. Pulling a rooster from his flock is a decision that should only be made by the owner. Roosters are like watchdogs. They sound their alarm when they see a potential danger. Prohibiting roosters would make us less safe. The feud near Osborne, it's a classic Hatfield McCoy case. I've heard both sides and spoiler alert, it's not even about roosters. If the owner of the roosters is abiding the ordinances, move on. I encourage council to do their due diligence, hear both sides, not just the side with ruffled feathers. The Borough's Code already covers the keeping of small animals. I encourage council to have the already existing ordinances enforced. If this was done, it wouldn't be part of your agenda tonight. Many people own dogs. They bark throughout the day. It's mostly normal, but we're accustomed to the sound of a dog's bark. A rooster's crow may seem annoying or loud because people aren't as familiar with roosters as they are with dogs. Decibel wise, there's no difference between a medium sized dog barking and a rooster crowing. So what is this really about? I would hope that it's not a favor for a friend kind of deal at the expense of innocent animals. And isn't gender equality supposed to be a thing? And in 2021, Morrisville is trying to prohibit male chickens. You can't make this stuff up. Keep in mind, not everyone can have kids. Some people own chickens to compensate not being able to reproduce. Please put that into consideration. The borough should be focusing on more important pressing issues. Leave our animals alone. And I'll leave you with the final thought. Perhaps the very thing you think you want banned is the very thing you're missing in life. If you have the land and you have the love in your heart, adopt a rooster, and maybe you'll even thank me later.
Hal Wilcox, please state your name and address and then you have three minutes after that.
Hal Wilcox, 52 Harrison Avenue. I'm here about saving Williamson Park. I've been in Marsville for 63 years and I coached Marsville Little League for many of it. My son played from the time he was five till he was 23. And I always hear complaints that there's not a lot of Marsville residents that play down the park anymore. Well, I'll tell you, some of my friends' best, some of my son's best friends were from Little League and they live outside the Borough limits. So, you know, me and my wife travel around every Saturday. That's how we get away. And we go through a lot of small towns and every small town has a main street. Well, that's what we got to worry about fixing is our main street. We got two buildings down there that have been empty for years and you want to say something's blighted, how about the Stockholm Building? Why don't we worry about that? Let's worry about building something that we already have before we build something new. Then I got a little comment here. Williamson Park is threatened to lives and it's blighted. There's money spreading in many directions and proposed redevelopment of a quote, a friend, the jewel of Marsville. I urge all of you to prevent this, save Williamson Park.
Walt?
Yeah.
Okay. Name and address and then you have three minutes.
Walt Trigetti, 536 Delora Drive. First of all, I'm glad all these baseball people are here because I spent 20 years in Little League and I played down there. Even beside that, here's what I remember. I remember when I was 12, saying, let's go to the island. We ride from Ram U down to the island because that's the place to go. And if it disappears, there won't be no place to ride. I even rode there just a week ago and I'm not that young anymore. I used to ride across the canal, now I walk my bike across the canal. But I just want to say, once you take the toothpaste out of the tube, you can't put it back. So this decision, whatever you guys do, it's going to be forever. It's going to be for something to happen long before we were here and it'll be here long afterwards. So it's got to be good. And I think the park's good the way it is, just needs something. But don't go crazy. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address and then you have three minutes.
John DeWilde, 94 West Maple in Marsville. You guys have a tough. Is it, is it better?
Yes.
Okay. John DeWilde, 94 West Maple Avenue in here in Marsville. I appreciate the position that everyone is in. There's a lot of very passionate people here about multiple issues. My comment is on the EIT. I know that, or feel that your income, Marsville's income comes from the tax base and there is a real need for it. I'm not in favor of the EIT at this point. I could be. And I don't think that I'm alone in that, but there's just seems to be a long history of mismanaged funds. Money's been spent for personal agendas, missing personnel that aren't paid for not doing their, their job. And everyone who's elected, they're, they are the keepers of our money. And I would say that there's a challenge out there now. Show us for a year that you can manage our money wisely and not give in to personal agendas and giving us, spending hundreds and thousands of dollars and not giving a net gain back to the residents who have given you their money. That's a lot of money that you're asking people, depending on their level of income, to fork over again. That's just a deeper pocket for mismanagement to reach into and spend. So I would just ask that, prove to us that you can do the job, that we want you there to do, and then come back and ask us again. I think you'll find a lot of people willing to say, okay, you need the money and we'll get something in return. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address and then you have three minutes.
Patricia Shell, 62 Grand View Avenue. I'm here to speak about Williamson Park. Over three years ago, the developer came to me and asked me if I would help him get people on board with this. Over three years ago. Now, I told him at that time that I would never, ever encourage using our park. I'm all for development of Marsville, but do not touch our park. He himself told me at that time that he was meeting with our former borough manager and former members of council and members of council that still sit there now. Now, that, you know, they might have met one-on-one. That's just a fancy way to skirt the sunshine law. But this has been going on for years and people have known about it on council and the former manager for years, but it's only been brought up to the people just a little while ago. But one thing I want to say, my husband was a member of the 1955 World Little League Championship from Marsville, Pennsylvania. Not a lot of people can say that. And to many people sitting here, that is our field of dreams. It is not a blighted piece of property. And for any of you to sit there and say that it is, you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Catherine Panzita, 401 Hillcrest Avenue. Oh, wait a second. Don't take this away from my time. I'm going to have to say this really quick. On 9C, 38 Hillcrest Avenue to Habitat for Humanity, I want to know how much money is in the missing blank and how do we go about selling that municipal property? For 9J on the Certified Redevelopment Area, I want all the Williamson tax parcel numbers removed as stated in the planning meeting. That's exactly what I came to planning and told. I also questioned legality at that planning meeting when there was a first and a second motion, then there was a motion at table, and then there was a whole revote. I truly understand that maybe you can do the Certified Redevelopment Area without what the planning recommendation was, but that was a joke and I wonder why that was not tabled at that point and the proper, the proper protocol wasn't taken place. And I apologize because you know what? I should have said point of order from the audience. As for 9V, the FEMA HMGP grant pre-application, I'd like to know what is the estimated cost and where, where fund does that come from? Lastly, on 9W, the 1% was advertised and if you look in the advertisement, it says 1% and both Borough and the school board could be in there. If I read that correctly, that's how it was advertised. Some quick numbers, going back from the April 2018 report to the November 2020 report from Keystone, the total earned income report, it was a drop of $8.8 million on that report. So let's see where that money's coming from. Last but not least, Mr. DeWilde said something and he said, you know, mismanagement and stuff, I think I'm going to take this opportunity with all these kids here. You know what kids learn? If you see an injustice, it might not be popular, you always go and do the right thing because liars and lies come out in the end. I wanted to respond to Councilwoman LaHaw at the finance meeting. She said, what did I ever do for Marsville? I'll expand your question further. Whatever did I do for Marsville prior to becoming on council? I look for ways to bring revenue to the budgets, especially the general fund. You can look at any revenue from Comcast, Verizon Equipment and all the money in those contracts and I'm personally responsible for that. Myself, Donna Slaughterback and Maria Buckman, we did start the cable that's now telecommunications. So yes, that's what I did to your budget. Every budget cycle, I pushed for councils to go to the PA Borough's Association and change the Borough Code to allow revenue streams from taxation on hotel rooms. I pushed for our borough departments to upgrade, replace equipment. Police Department, I didn't want used cars. Office staff, I wanted a generator and I wanted up to computers. And last, do I have a minute?
Yeah, you can, go ahead.
And most importantly, I worked on comprehensive plans, zoning changes to keep the little undeveloped land our little borough has just as what that was. Park land, not a developed site. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Stefan Malte.
I believe it's Stefani.
Is it Stephanie?
Stephanie, maybe? Is it Stephanie?
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't sign up to talk.
Oh, well, your name is on there.
Oh, I, I, this is our first meeting, I just, I.
Oh, you didn't, so neither of you is speaking? Okay. All right.
Are you showing?
Yeah.
Linda Kimpel.
I understand. I'm going to ask the next person.
Okay.
I can't even read the ground.
Ken Brothers. Name and address and then three minutes.
Ken Brothers, 745 North Pennsylvania. This is one of my first borough meetings. I've been here a couple of times with the Scouts or some other organizations. And mostly today, I wanted to come and talk about the earned income tax. The earned income tax was a primary reason for coming. And just the little bit I've heard and received about it, it's a bad idea. Whoever thinks this will later be repealed and reversed. I'm not sure where that comes from. If you look at taxes on gas, they've only ever gone up. Noting that though, just in general, as the points were made before, that the management, allocation of funds and better visibility would be more. and better visibility would be more prudent considering this. Now that I'm here and hearing these other things, I would say as well that for keeping Williamson Park the way it is, once you develop something, reclaiming it is extremely tough. And finally, to comment on the chickens as the borough is looking at that, I'm not sure if you've considered the age limit or how you're going to do those. Because buying poultry when they're young, even the stores and the experts cannot tell the male from the female for quite a while. So with that, I will stop. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jackie Carroll.
All right. My name is Jackie Carroll, 36 Union Street. And this is about Williamson Park. So the definition of blight is an agent or action that harms or ruins value to something. A little bit of graffiti and trash doesn't blight a park. I see those things everywhere. I've seen graffiti at Tyler Park, and I've seen trash there as well. Do you think Tyler Park should be blighted? This whole argument you have that Williamson Park is blighted is unsustainable, seeing as the park is not blighted and it is not underutilized. It is, in fact, a safe place for many in this community and surrounding communities to come to for social activities and other activities that they may not be able to do without this park. I want to address the fact that when I mentioned at a previous borough meeting that some of you all were trying to insinuate that Williamson Park be blighted, it was met with extreme aggression and disrespect and defensiveness. And Ted Parker even called me and others conspiracy theorists. Well, then, you're all voting that the park is not blighted, right? Otherwise, you, to me, are lying and using your power as a civil servant to manipulate the appearance of what is truly happening. And if you vote yes to Williamson Park being blighted, you should be ashamed of yourself. Government officials and borough council members should all be working to serve the people of this community. All I've been seeing in this conflict to develop Williamson Park is that many of you are not taking into account the needs and wants of this community at large and, in fact, are actually catering to the profits of a rich private developer. It brings into question the integrity of most of you in these positions. You are not doing your job fulfilling the needs of the community. I no doubt believe Morrisville can use some help to revitalizing the town and bettering its businesses, but not at the expense of this great and beloved park. There are other options. The many vacant buildings and crumbling streets and sidewalks that can be redeveloped but are being ignored are all examples of this. And due to this ignorance, we have very little faith in seeing this proposed development of the park being fulfilled. Speaking of redevelopment, the RDA seems to be trying to get their hands on this project. But why? Since it isn't a redevelopment project, they need to stick to their script and actually fix the potential business front buildings that need redevelopment, even though that might mean harder work. It's their mission, and it is what is best for the community right now and in the future. Furthermore, the bottom line is that the intended development of Williamson Park is completely illegal under Pennsylvania's Donated or Dedicated Property Act. Why would the state have this law put into place if it wasn't important? You should all think long and hard about what is ethical and moral and what is wrong if you are a council member who plans to blatantly break the law in the faces of those who know what you're doing and strongly disagree to it. And I highly suggest voting for Katherine Price Engelhardt, First Ward, Andrew Lubin, Third Ward...
Three minutes.
And Brad Anderson for mayor on November 2nd. They're all...
Thank you.
... in favor of saving the park.
Deborah Colgan. Name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Deborah Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. I'm urging council to table Agenda Item 9J. The expansion of the RDA redevelopment area is a very significant action. The public deserves an explanation of exactly what this means and why you are approving it. At the only public meeting on this resolution, both the Planning Commission and the RDA told the public that this expansion has nothing to do with the Select Morrisville Proposal in Williamson Park. But we all know that that is not true. At that October 11th Planning Commission meeting, the public was given a false impression of what this means and was prevented from mentioning the Select Morrisville Proposal or commenting on the impact that this action would have on the park. They could not provide a coherent or logical reason as to why the Williamson Park parcel had to be included in the redevelopment area. The public was lied to and denied a voice on the topic. Additionally, we need the solicitor to weigh in on whether the recommendation you have from the Planning Commission is even legitimate, as referred to earlier. At the meeting, a motion to approve the resolution recommending the expansion of the RDA redevelopment area was made and seconded. Almost immediately, a motion was made to table it. The motion was seconded, and it passed 3 to 2. Then, the borough manager stepped in and had them rescind the vote to table. Our solicitor recently advised us that once a motion to table is made and seconded, and it supersedes the original motion and is voted on before moving forward. So I don't understand how your recommendation here is legitimate. Anyone with integrity cannot vote to approve this resolution. You haven't explained what it is. The author of the report is misleading the public, as is your planning commission. You haven't had public discussion regarding the report's false claims of blight. You did not, as a body, even see the RDA presentation. There is a major budget issue right now, and that's what needs attention from both council. And Item 9J does not fix the pressing money problems. So it does not need to be done tonight. The first step for the Select Morrisville Project in Williamson Park has been secretive, poorly handled, and eyebrow-raising. With regards to the budget, I have a question. I read that the Morrisville was expected to receive over $840,000 from the American Rescue Plan. Would you explain how that's being used or what that is? I don't understand that. As for the EIT, I really don't see how we can get out of our current budget mess without it. Any council members who would be voting against the EIT must tell us what specific items you will be cutting so that people can understand the impact.
Three minutes.
The years of accounting tricks and robbing Peter to pay Paul are over. And I suggest we should all remember this when we vote in November. Thank you.
The next person who wrote in is not a borough resident, so we're going to go on to Eva Kastner Puschl. I'm sorry if I butchered your name. Name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Eva Kastner Puschl. Sorry, you didn't do as bad. I live on 85 Central Avenue. So I'm a resident next to the park. And I must say, I've come here to the meeting about a year ago for the first time when I heard about the park. And I was a new homeowner also next to the park. I chose it because of its beauty, because we have way too little green and open space these days when you look around. And the park was really inviting because I saw activities happening. And then we all know what happened. COVID hit, and we really lost touch with one another because we couldn't see one another unless we were outside in a safe space and gather. The park provided all of that. And being near, next to the park, I saw all the activities. I saw all the kids sledding down the hills in the wintertime when we had snow. Where would those kids go? We don't have any other sledding or slopes in the area. I saw the Little League, and thank you for being here, playing at night. And it was just wonderful. When other people would say, well, it's so noisy. You hear kids screaming. I found that is life. That's what it's all about, and we need to preserve that. We cannot have our kids back in front of the screens. I have been teaching, and I see how depleted so many kids were because they were not running out there. I could, and then when, as a teacher, you demand them to sit still, they can't take it anymore because they need to act. They need to run. They need to move. They need to breathe fresh air. And we all do, as a matter of fact. And I'm a big advocate for a healthy lifestyle. So I really urge you to think about your decision, what big impact that decision that you are making has on our future. It cannot be easily reversed. And last week, I was at the Planning Commission meeting. I read the report. I read the amendment to it. And I asked the RDA presenter and said, which of the seven criteria that you're presenting in this report actually deems valid for the park to be, to become a part of the redevelopment area? And they couldn't answer it.
One minute.
There is really no... It doesn't seem to be true. And their way around it was to say, well, it doesn't have to... No criteria has to actually fit, and it can still become a part of the redevelopment area. I have seen sketches of this area in 2005 and 2006. The park was not part, at that time, part of the map. And all of a sudden, they say it has to be because of the way the map... I'm sorry, I'm at a loss of words here. But it needs to be contiguous, I think is the word. I apologize for that. So it does not make sense. Everybody who has some sort of, really rethinks that, would understand that this is just made up. And I really urge you tonight, see how many people are there. And I know you're sitting here, and I believe that some of you have good intentions. But I really wish that you would invite us...
Three minutes.
... for an open conversation. Really also tell us what you think and not just always have us stand here, talk to you. I think that's what we can expect from you and what we can demand. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Weber. Name and address, and then three minutes.
I'm Todd Weber from 25 East Franklin Street. And I'm going to set aside my feelings about Williamson Park since there's a lot of other people here about that topic. I'm here to voice my opposition to the earned income tax. I understand that the finances of the borough are in some straits right now. But I think that part of that at least has to be a management problem. Because we already pay a lot of taxes in this borough compared to other areas around here. And yet, we still have mediocre services in most of the borough. There's a constant speeding on our streets that's not enforced. We have a high school tax that, funds of school that has a horrible reputation in the state. And I think to impose even more money and give more money to the borough, especially on top of an economy that's just now recovering from the COVID epidemic and people that are still in personal financial straits, is not something that you should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Deana Tenzillo.
Hi, I'm Deana Tenzillo. I live at 136 North Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no on Motion 9J and reject the resolution of the Planning Commission to amend the boundary of the Morrisville Borough Certified Redevelopment Area. This amendment to the certified redevelopment area has been rushed through with hardly any public insight and notice. The plan itself is nowhere to be found on the borough's website, and yet it profoundly affects the residents of the borough and the surrounding area because it seeks to add 44 acres to the current redevelopment area. Nowhere in the 37-page proposed amendment does it explain that the area seeks to add the redevelopment area and that the redevelopment area encompasses all of a public park. Instead, it cherry picks small, isolated places around the 44 acres, the vast majority of which, the park, are not marked as blighted in the report. Instead, it refers to the park, without naming it as a park, as 12 tax-exempt lots representing approximately 94% of the total land area. The tax-exempt lots, combined with underutilized and vacant properties in the subject areas, places an undue burden on the municipality and taxpayers. When the Planning Commission was to take up a vote last week on whether or not to recommend the RDA's proposal, there was no notice to the public. Nothing on the borough website, no mention of this very important vote. The same goes for today's vote. Only a week after the Planning Commission's vote, the proposal is once again nowhere to be found on the borough site for viewing or by the public. And it is squeezed among so many other important things today that there is little chance for residents to know that something critical is happening tonight. If the council votes to accept the amended boundaries, which would add Williamson Park to the redevelopment area based on ludicrous finding of blight, then the RDA can, now that it has defined this area as blighted, contract with a redeveloper or acquire the property through eminent domain.
One minute.
I'm also confused as to how this vote can even happen today in accordance with 35 Pennsylvania Statute 1710, which authorizes the RDA to prepare the redevelopment proposal. 1710G states that the governing body, upon receipt of the redevelopment proposal and recommendation, if any, of the Planning Commission, shall hold public hearing upon said proposal. Notice of the time, place, and purpose of such a hearing shall be published at least once a week for three consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation in the field of operation of authority. The time of the hearing to be at least 10 days from the last publication of notice. This subsection details what the notice must include and that the proposal, with such maps, plans, contracts, or other documents, together with the recommendation, if any, of the Planning Commission and supporting data shall be available for public inspection for at least 10 days prior to the hearing. How does this proposal by the RDA not qualify for a public hearing with notice published at least two weeks in advance? Why is this vote being taken up to one week after the Planning Commission voted to approve the RDA's approval? Why has none of this been presented to the public before any votes were taken? How can this highly selective and misleading proposal mark the park as blighted? Please vote no on 9J.
Melissa Johnson. Name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Melissa Johnson, 117 Park Avenue. I want to thank the council for listening to all of us. I cannot imagine the seats you're sitting in and the decisions that you have to make. And I'm trusting you to make the decision based on what you know our community needs, not just wants. And when I think about Item 9W, I know that you're struggling to figure out where money's coming from. While we citizens were hit with COVID, the city was hit, one way or another. And coming up with that money can't be easy. Figuring out how to have our community continue to run can't be easy. And I'm sure looking at that text was one of the only ways you could figure out where else you could hit us or hit the community with something so that we can get the kind of revenue in here that we need. But I don't think hitting our income anymore than our taxes are already, that the school taxes are high, the property taxes are high. Those of us who live on the island, we also have flood insurance and the like. I don't know where else that could come from, except Williamson Park. It's a huge amount of land that is waiting for development. Now, whether that development means remove baseball fields, add baseball fields, add soccer fields, I don't know. But I believe in the meetings that I've attended that the question was about development. Now, where the idea came that we're losing the park altogether, I don't know. But I'm trusting you to make a decision that puts money into the community, not just from hitting our taxes, but also maybe taxing land that's not being used to the best of its potential. And I don't think, no offense to the teams that are here, I think all of us use the park in one way or another. I don't think we're, I don't think you're looking to get rid of the park. I think we're looking to figure out how best to serve our community and where to find the revenue that we need. And I saw the chickens, and I'd love to talk about that, too. But I hear my time is going. I think we need to figure out, I think we all need to trust you to figure out where the money's going to come from and look at the land that's around here that we can sell off or tax another way or what have you without taxing the citizens any more than we already are. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim O'Brien.
You're speaking on behalf of the Little League organization. Okay.
President Parker, council members. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. First, I want to acknowledge the players that have come out tonight on behalf of Morrisville Little League and their families out of Ohio. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our community right here. This is the future of our... This is the future of our community. And I'm hoping here to speak tonight on amendment, I guess, motion 9J, and I'm asking you to vote no. Before I get into this, I do want to thank members of the subcommittee who worked with me and are continuing to work with me on revising and renegotiating the MOU. The negotiations and conversations have been very fair and forthright. We have discussed from our positions and I believe we're going to end up landing in a very mutually acceptable position. And I really appreciate Vice President Paul for your effort in this, Mr. Jaeger, and as well as Mr. Nickel in that work. As it relates to the amendment, this document, 30-something pages, 15 photo exhibits, 14 of the exhibits really are not of Williamson Park. And yet Williamson Park is the majority of the 44 acres that are in discussion for redevelopment. I feel like that is, it's a lie of omission. It's not representative of what the park, what the question at hand is. It's unfair. All of the pictures were taken by somebody who didn't even bother to get out of their vehicle. They're all from the road. You're not looking at a very fair picture of what the question at hand is. And so I do encourage you to vote no on 9J. I also want to thank for giving our kids this opportunity to have a lesson in citizenship tonight, from the chickens to the taxes. It's been really appreciated, right? Kids, I don't know if you were expecting to get this full lesson tonight, but it was really cool. And I do want to invite lastly, Mr. Sam Long, one of our players in the league, take a couple of seconds of my time to talk about what Morrisville Little League means to him. So Sam?
My name is Sam Long. I live at 100 North Delmore Avenue. I love playing for Marsville Police. Please save the park.
So again, thank you for the time tonight. Greatly appreciate you guys, the open communication that you've had on this with us as a league. I really do hope that you'll consider what I'm asking and vote 9J down tonight, so we can move on and continue to have great seasons ahead of us. So thank you all.
I assume that Sam Long is the Sam Long after you on the?
He is.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Debbie Smith.
If I can, I would like to now, for free, to take my spot because this is a park driver has filled with kids tonight, so I'll take his one.
Sure, that's fine. He's just moving. Name and address and then you have three minutes after that.
Yes, my name is Rich Bergel, 608 Prospect Avenue. And I'm here to voice my opposition to propose the EIT. I'm 100% against a potential EIT tax. The taxpayers of Marsville are already paying too high of taxes. Please stop saying our boroughs and townships have an EIT and realize why a lot of the homeowners come to Marsville to live and work. It's definitely not because we have a clean town to walk around. Almost every year, the council has gone to court to screw the homeowners and raise our millage. We already pay the highest legal mill rate for the borough. You need to figure out this budget with what you already take from us. If the proposal is a 1% EIT, our household making $150,000 per year will equivalent to 123% increase over our 2021 borough real estate tax. Let me say that again. It's equivalent to 123% tax increase. Online, when the sum of the borough council discussed the EIT tax, they act like it is just 1% increase. Seems like nothing, but in reality, it's huge. 1% can make the difference, especially with inflation. Many households are already having difficulty paying higher prices for groceries, gas, heating oil, and medication. The borough manager will need to be more creative with the budget and trigger. In reality, when you don't have the money, you don't spend, it's unacceptable to continue to hire additional full-time police officers and/or staff that the town can't afford to pay. This is an unfair tax to the working residents of Marsville. I know some of you sitting there on council may not think $1,500 is a lot of money, but for many, it is too much, including me. This borough needs to become more financially responsible. Stop, please stop taxing us to death and vote no to the EIT. Finally, to the residents watching and hearing this meeting tonight, remember on November 2nd, elections have come. Thank you.
All right, we're going to have Debbie Smith go next.
Debbie, can you? Here we go. Debbie Smith, 221 West Maple. First, I want to thank the resident who spoke, I forget what her first name was, very articulate about what you all have to deal with. I was up there, I know what it is to do that budget, it's very hard. With that said, it's no secret that I was for this development, still am. Not to say it's a perfect development, it's not. This is only the beginning, stages, and there's many changes that could happen, may not happen at all, but put the brakes on it before it ever gets any further is not going to help things. You obviously need money. You need money. And how do we know that? Because you're trying to put in an EIT, it was attempted before. The taxpayers are getting killed with the taxes we have here. You just don't have enough. And unless you do a serious kickstart development to this town, you're not going to get that revenue. And when you put an EIT in, if you think that that's going to be enough to handle things, it is not. Because next, where are you going to go after that? There's nowhere to go, except to increase that. So now you're not only at the highest millage that you can get us for on our taxes for our homes, you're now going to have it in our pocket. How much more? It's going to depreciate the value of your property because what, what couples or people want to come to your town and pay for a home and have to pay those exorbitant taxes and then also pay an EIT? Because I hear people say, well, other towns have EITs. Well, they also, a lot of those towns don't have the highest tax millage that we do. That was also brought up. So I really think that you need to evaluate how you're going to handle some of these things maybe you could do with the budget. Because unless you seriously think about doing a development here, I don't know where you're going to get that kind of money. And an EIT is not going to be enough. It might last a little bit, but you're going to come back for more. How much more? We don't have it.
One minute.
Thank you. So for me, my personal opinion, I'd really like you to seriously vote yes on 9J. On the EIT, I'm dead set against it, as well as a lot of other people in this town that can't afford it. So give that a serious thought before you put that in. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff Liu. Name and address and then you have three minutes.
Jeff Liu, 327 Hillside Avenue. I just implore you to vote for yes on 9J for a variety of reasons. It solves a lot of the fiscal shortfalls that you are obviously facing for all the reasons Debbie just delineated. I mean, you're talking about an EIT when we have almost New Jersey-style tax rates. So this will solve those issues. There's a 60-mile trail through town. There still will be ballfields even after this is over. There may not be seven, but it won't be the end of the world, or Little League either. We need to attract badly needed investment and none of the detractors I've heard, I have not heard one single alternative to this. Because without this sort of development and the investment that will attract, there won't be a town left and there won't be a park either. Not to mention that this developer is actually willing to work with the towns people's wants and needs. Every time we've gone to him, he comes back for the next meeting with points met and matched. And no one else is going to do that. So I implore you to vote yes on 9J. And I'm really at business about the EIT. Obviously, something needs to be done though. So those are my thoughts. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Angel Alvarez. Name and address and then you have three minutes.
Name and address, Angel Alvarez, 619 Jefferson. This is my first meeting. I'm a fairly still new resident in the borough, less than three years. And in this time, I've come to recognize this as my new home, my truly new home. Prior active military, moved all over the place in the country, so now I consider myself part of this community. So I've decided to come join to see what, what I can help with our neighbors in trying to convey to you what I think is not the right move when it comes to the earned income tax. Like I said, this is my first meeting. I think this is a good show of people, but I think there is way more out there that for whatever reason, we're not able to come into this meeting and I'm sure are also opposed to it. The reason why I'm opposed to it is because I think a lot of times, unfortunately, due to most of our human nature, is knee-jerk reaction to say, oh, wait a minute, we're short of money, money here, or we're suffering here, we're bleeding there, whatever, let's tax. It's an easy fix, it's an easy answer. But unfortunately, many times, it's not the right answer. So as you've all seen, we're still dealing with COVID. Many people unfortunately lost their jobs. Some people retained their jobs, but got a bump down on their income for whatever reasons. So not only have they been suffering on that financial aspect of their lives, if you put on an earned income tax on all of our pockets, then we're going to be suffering even more. One deep question that I would like to ask the council is, has there been a financial analysis done? If there is mismanagement of funds, I think a mismanagement, if there is an analysis, a financial analysis done, it can help pinpoint if there's either mismanagement of funds or what areas where we're spending money or we prior to now spend money that doesn't need to go to there now. Maybe we can borrow from that and put it there where it can be better spent and try that avenue before we start taxing people's earned income. So I strongly urge you to please think about this and the impact it has on all of our community and their income to take care of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gary Taylor, 405 Hamilton Boulevard. I'd like to talk tonight about a couple of things, but I'd start off with some of the things that were said here about the park. I've been in town for 32 years and five of my kids went through Little League here. It was nice down here, being able to go when you had five kids, all playing at the same time from one field to the next and the next, and kind of spend a couple innings in each kid's field. That won't happen if we have to spread the park, the fields all the way through. Our church, First Baptist, now Compass Fellowship, holds Omega Sports Camp down there every year, takes the whole park in the evenings, a free camp for kids in the community. A great place, I don't think that would take place if we lost that. Went through New Jersey for a wedding a couple of weeks ago, and, excuse me, for a funeral, and see all these big signs, this part of, this parcel of ground, save, open space. They're buying up land like open space all over, trying to keep open space. Why would we want to take away the little bit of space we have? The other thing, and I'm not really necessarily saying that, taking a position of the park except that the presentation I heard didn't make sense tax-wise. I'm not sure this will, well, it might be more developed to town, I don't think it's going to help our taxes. When you look at all the different tax revenues coming, and I think they will probably ask for a tax vacation for a while, until they can get them up and running, and once they ask for that, you're going to wind up with more police, more roads, more snow removal, more traffic, all kinds of things that are going to take more tax dollars. And we're not going to get that much from typical house, you know, you might rent for, say maybe $1,200, you've got to pay taxes of $2,700 on that house that are down in the matter. You put a big apartment building in someplace, they charge $1,700, you're not going to get $2,700 per rental unit. If they did, you might get some taxes, but you're not going to tax the whole building for a price, and it's going to be way lower than what you get taxes anyways. I think the government, tax-wise, will cost the borough money, not give us money. But my main reason for coming, and I'll try to, I'll be talking fast here through these points of the EIT. Once it's enacted, there's no ability to curb the amount. New Jersey sales tax started 1%, 2%, 3%, to 7%. There's no guarantee property taxes will stay down because you do this. They're probably going to stay the same or go up. It'll lose its sense for people to work in Marsville like they have here. It's already hard to, hard to hire people in Marsville. By taking a chunk out of every penny they earn here, it's going to make it harder to earn money. It's going to penalize the employers who are trying to earn, as well as the employees. House prices, as was mentioned already by Deb, will probably go down because people aren't willing to pay the earned income taxes, an advantage they have to living here in Some of the other options, I mean, maybe you should look at some other things like, I don't know, taxing cigarettes, you know, I know that's not something that's easily done, but we are one of the only towns on the Delaware River, except for Easton, with a couple of free bridges and a humongous population on the other side. Ask the state to grant us the idea and put five 10 cents a pack or something on it, and all those New Jersey people can bring their money here. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Friedman.
I'm not allowed to speak, I'm from Borah Field.
That's right, sorry about that. Paul Cobesar. I didn't see that.
Two things, EIT, I was only going to come for the EIT tonight, but the development came up also, but in Bucks County, there are four, only four municipalities that do not charge EIT. In Montgomery County, there's only two that don't charge EIT. In Lehigh County, there's only zero. They all charge the EIT. The EIT is capped at 1% by the state. It can't go over 1%. Now, the school board can also choose to charge, that means school would get a half a percent and this town would get a half a percent. That's how this works. Now, does it affect everybody? No. Does it affect a lot of people? Yeah. It doesn't, I pay the EIT in Chuppam Township, I pay 1%. I'd much rather have that 1% stay in my hometown. And I would challenge everybody here to look at your 1099s and your W2s to see whether you're being charged that. I'm guaranteed there's a lot of people in here already being charged 1% that could stay in this town. And I have a question to counsel, I don't know if you're for it or against it, but look at yourself and say, are you being charged the EIT now? If you are, you would have no problem voting yes for this. If you're not, there's a direct conflict of interest, in my opinion. So I am for it, I know it's a mixed bag out there and I appreciate that. Now for the RDA, the redevelopment zone. I'm on the planning commission, as some of you know. I was a dissenting vote last week. The RDA has planned to expand and include Williamson Park. Why? Why? Why the park? Are they planning to take this over and hand it off to select Marksville and Jomograph? It's a rhetorical question. What has the RDA done for Marsville? Think about this. Okay, the 7-Eleven strip center, that's a real gem. The fire workshop, glad that's there. The cloverleaf property, that's a really good one. And the stocking building, we're going to take care of that. Why should we trust the RDA with anything? With anything? Except this big project that they're talking about. They failed over and over and over again, and I might add, quite miserably. I don't trust the RDA, the council doesn't trust the RDA, time they have failed us. Vote against this map, vote against the RDA, they don't harbor our best interests at heart, period.
Name and address and then you have three minutes.
I'm Joseph Loeffler, 520 Hamilton Boulevard. I'm speaking on behalf of Williamson Park and Morrisville Little League. I've been a part of Morrisville Little League for the last eight years, since I started playing in the minors. After the minors, I progressed through the majors, the juniors, and the senior team. And these experiences have been the best of my life. During both During both the spring and the fall for the last eight years, I spent a good chunk of my time at the field, whether practicing or in the cages or just going down for some solo work. Through all this, I've learned a lot from my coaches. I have made amazing friends. I can say my only bad experience is learning last spring that I was going to be too old to continue playing. Even still, I'm regularly at the field to cheer on the other Morrisville teams. I value Morrisville baseball as much as some of the professional teams because our, especially our senior team, has been very competitive for the last few years. We have a top tier program and knowing that Morrisville is among the best really brings me happiness. I have two other brothers that are in our baseball program right now, sitting in the back, as well as a sister that's in our softball program. I want my brothers and sisters to be able to have the same experience that I did at Williamson Park and go through all the fun and all the learning that I did as well.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Reza Ramon. I'm at 155 Hillcrest Avenue. I just want to talk about, a little bit about Morrisville Park and also about the earned income tax a bit also. Frankly speaking, we've been in town for a little while now and, you know, we really nervously watch, you know, the direction the town is going because the town has been at a crossroads for a little while. You know, there's only two directions that things will likely go, in my lifetime and it'd be in my kids' lifetime also. In all reality, it's either going to stay the same or look maybe a tiny bit more like Yardley or, you know, our neighbors to the north, or frankly, it's going to look a lot more like Trenton and really look like an extension of Trenton more and more. And when you have to choose those paths, you really have to make those decisions very, very carefully. Selling off the park, it's a very dangerous. There's a couple of different reasons why that is. Number one is there's very little open space in this town to begin with. So that open space, reclaiming that is going to be very, very difficult. And it's going to be difficult to have a town that is anything, you know, looks, if you want to make things look less like Trenton, you need more green space, look less. Another one is the developers in general, you know, I'm, at the end of the day, I work for a very large company. I know how large companies work and, you know, how for-profit organizations work. They're in for the money. If there's a risk they need to take and they're going to make out for it, even if they have to declare bankruptcy or change their mind and say, hey, this is not going to be luxury apartments anymore, it's going to be lower rent apartments because we need to make the money, that's what they're going to do. They do not have our best interests at heart, especially when these decisions are generational decisions, right? So each of these decisions will affect my children and children after that. It's going to change the fundamental dynamic of the town. Now, these people can say, hey, we're going to be, you know, do this nice development, but at the end of the day, when that doesn't work out, they get to walk away. We cannot. And it's, you know, as much as I have sympathy for folks across the river and, you know, it's great, you know, it'd be nice for them, welcome them into our communities, but the problem is booting up yet another apartment, it's very risky. It looks much more like more of the demographic and more of the social dynamics that we don't want. And ultimately, probably it's not going to get the town out of the hole and put it deeper into the hole. As for the EIT, frankly speaking, nobody likes taxes. I don't like taxes. But if we have to choose an evil to get the town out of the hole that probably is in right now and it's going to continue to deepen, a tax is okay. Other towns, as the gentleman mentioned, have taxes. It's going to be painful, no doubt, in adjustment, no doubt. But it's less risky than, you know, essentially taking the town generationally in the wrong direction. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. I hope, you know, you guys are probably all thinking about all of those issues. Hopefully all of our inputs changes your mind in one direction or the other, at least. That's my hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicole Ramon.
Hi, I'm Nicole Ramon from 155 Hillcrest Ave. And I'm here to comment in regards to item 9J on the agenda, extending the redevelopment area to include the blighted area, which from my understanding is meant to refer to Williamson Park. My understanding of the definition of the word blighted means deteriorated, dilapidated, decayed, often used to describe urban blight. While Williamson Park may not be the fanciest park around with the most amenities available, I don't think it's by any means blighted, deteriorated, dilapidated, or decayed. The basics are all attended to and up kept. Many people use Williamson Park on any given day. Some of the many things that I've personally seen people using the park for include walking, taking their dogs for a walk, running, kids playing, bicycling, frisbee, kite flying, picnics, reading, bird watching, events, and of course, baseball. This is by definition does not describe an area that is blighted. Saying that Williamson Park or any portion of it is blighted so that the redevelopment authority can allow a developer to build an apartment complex development on it doesn't make sense. Redevelopment, at least I thought, meant to rip down vacant, dilapidated buildings and put in new ones, or at least somehow redevelop them, renovate them. It doesn't mean to put buildings on well-loved and well-used open space. Unfortunately, many studies have shown that apartments typically do not generate long-term income for a town. Instead, they increase the cost of services such as police, ambulance, and schools, often quite substantially. Please vote to keep our park as what it is intended to be, an open space available for all to enjoy. And one last quick note about the local earned income tax. I feel that the discussion of the EIT should be tabled if possible until the economy has stabilized further. The economic impacts of COVID have hit many people hard and a recession could still occur. So please table the idea of an EIT until folks have had the chance to recover from COVID's economic impact. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
No? All right, then I'll just use my natural voice. I'm a bit of a social butterfly, everybody knows.
Name and address, please. You said your name and your address, yes.
Okay, address. 336 North Pennsylvania Avenue, the little white house on the hill with the four columns. Okay. Basically, I'm here, I came only to talk about the earned income tax, but hearing about the park and with my background, I feel I should give you some ideas of my own. So I'll tell you a little bit about myself. This month I'm going to be 60 years old and I'd like two presents for you guys, all right? One, that you tabled the tax thing, and two, that you do something else about the park because you can't be really doing that with the park. Because I have a degree in architecture and I'm licensed in four states, so if anybody could tell you something's blighted, it's me. That place is not blighted. I also sit on your zoning board. I'm the chairman. I was asked two questions that I can remember by Jane Berg before they put me on the board. One, can you vote no? And I said, what do you mean by that? Well, if you don't believe in the project, can you vote no? The answer was yes, I can vote no. Okay? Then the other thing I was told, you can't be a detective. And I says, well, what do you mean by that? Or you, you know, you get these projects, you can't go out and look at everything and bother people. So I said, fine, I could do that. So I mind my business since I've been on the board. I don't go out, I don't look, I'm open minded. So one of the things I have a question about with this development of the park, you're going to have apartments there, I might understand that the answer is yes. Can anybody answer that? 660 apartment. Okay, great. What is the cost of one student? So let's take 300 students, you're going to need new schools, all right? All you have to do is go across the river. I'm also a construction official and I work for the state in New Jersey. So most of the larger buildings that are owned by the state have my signature on them, like the State House, okay? Now, you go to Robbinsville, they did a wonderful development, but they never told anybody that you're going to have all these new students. And everybody thought it was great, right up until they got their tax bill, okay? And then it wasn't so great. So I don't understand it, okay? I'm going to be 60 and in my lifetime, I've never seen a tax, once it's placed on me, removed. So I don't know about the rest of you, right? But I say we shouldn't have a tax, we should table it, we should put, I don't think we can get it on for next month when we're having the elections. But I'd like us all to vote for the tax. We love you. We vote for you, we want you there. But it's our money and I want to vote either yes or no with the rest of the people. And as far as the park, I like the same thing. So those are my two presents, if I can have them, right?
Three minutes.
Excuse me?
It was three minutes.
Oh, well, I still want my two presents.
Stephen Hope.
Hi, my name is Stephen Hoppy, 121 Park Avenue. I'll also disclose I'm on the zoning board since it seems every other zoning and planning commissioner did. I'm here, I was mostly going to talk about the opposition to the EIT. It does seem, however, that you have two intertwined issues here. I see all the support for saving the park. I live right next to the park, I see it a lot of hours of the day. This park is used for 99% one thing, baseball, right? We had a bunch of kids in here, they're all gone now, we had their parents, they all left. This park is about baseball. You know what the problem with the park is? The baseball diamonds are not in good shape. We don't have basketball courts that are in good shape, we don't have tennis courts that are in good shape, we don't have a stage that's in good shape. I didn't see a dancer, I didn't see a tennis player, I didn't see a basketball player here tonight. It's because baseball is what this park's about. When people say save the park, it means save the Little League. I'm all for that. One way we could do that is allow the redevelopment and allow those fields to be rebuilt with money that comes in from that redevelopment, from that developer. Anyway, if we don't do that, we don't have the money come in. I understand why you want to have an earned income tax. However, I don't think this is the right time to do it. I don't think asking the citizens of this town to spend more of their hard-earned money, and that is earned money, that's what you're taxing, to support a mismanaged budget is a great idea. The general fund is approximately a $5 million budget. 80% of that goes to three things, police, sanitation, and water. We pay water bill, we get charged annually for our sanitation fees. That leaves mostly the police in that 80% and administrative costs. $2 million is for the police. You're asking for a 1% income tax to basically support that in administration. What can those police do? I've seen the meeting notes, the chief is still here and said he can't police the two quality of life issues. Fireworks going off at all hours of night, people gathering up on Trenton Avenue after clubs. He's openly admitted he won't and cannot police those two issues. And you're asking us for more money for that. I just can't stand by that. Let's talk about the numbers since I have some time left. If you make $100,000, you're asking for another $1,000 a year. If you bought a house in this town with a 30-year mortgage, you're asking people to spend another $30,000 on that house at $100,000 level. If you make $30,000 a year, you want $300 a year from the people of this town. That's a car payment to a lot of people. And there's a lot of people here making $30,000. So, you know, add to that the difficulties of COVID, the economy getting back on its feet, I don't think this is the right time for a tax. I urge you all to vote no on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Oh, well, just like this. Don Rice, 343 Crown Street. You folks have seen me up here making comments before. And typically, I read my comment like I'm going to tonight, but this is a comment that I didn't write for counsel. I wrote it for the planning commission last week and I was threatened with arrest if I continued making my presentation. So I'm going to read you my comment that I made to the planning commission and I wanted to read it to them, but I'm going to read it to you folks instead. So when I say the planning commission, you can often substitute borough council in this. The issue before the planning commission is Select Morrisville's development of Williamson Park. The report provided to the planning commission by the Bucks County RDA is part of the plan of the RDA in Select Morrisville to develop Williamson Park. What the RDA in Select Morrisville want is for Select Morrisville to develop Williamson Park, but Select Morrisville cannot submit a development application to the borough because they don't own the park. What to do? The RDA says, we'll help you because we're supposed to help Select Morrisville with its application submission. Your motion 9J last December. We can write a report that says the park is blighted. Of course, this is a lie, but we will have some nice bogus photographs to let us pretend the park is blighted. Then we can go to the Morrisville Planning Commission and manner of factly say, our report proves Williamson Park is blighted. What the planning commission is being asked to approve is a recommendation to council that, one, Williamson Park is blighted. Two, therefore the Morrisville redevelopment area must be expanded so the RDA can take ownership of the park and then submit Select Morrisville's development application to council. The problem with their plan is, one, the report is a lie. To approve the recommendation to expand the redevelopment area when this report is a self-serving lie is unethical, unprofessional, and it's illegal. It is illegal because the Donated or Dedicated Property Act requires that alienation of municipal park ownership can only be permitted by the Orphans Court. It is illegal for the RDA to take ownership of the park. I make this comment after being informed about the Donated or Dedicated Property Act by our lawyer. It's the planning commission and borough council making an informed and legal decision after discussion with your solicitor. The Morrisville Borough webpage states that the planning commission is responsible for and charged with exercising a municipality's legal right to develop a comprehensive plan that meets its specific community planning objectives. The recommendation you are being asked to approve is not within Morrisville's legal right because it supports an illegal act. The report itself is a lie and we want our park. Please do not approve this resolution, which tonight is motion 9J. Thank you.
Mary Horrenda, 343 Crown Street. I want to address a few of the comments that we've had here today first. I have seen, I've heard that the park is all baseball. That is not true. I have used the park, I use it for walking. I love to go up on the levee and walk and look at the river. If this development goes through, that will no longer be a pleasant walk. I'll be looking at the river on one side, but a shopping center on the other side, you know, with a parking lot and trash flowing all over the place and just like, you know, that kind of thing. And then there'll be your apartments right up to the levee and people's pool decks are going to be up there and, you know, there's just going to be all kinds of trash coming off of them too and people are going to be up there and, you know, I'm not seeing trees, I'm seeing buildings, I'm seeing parking lots. So, and the guy was talking about the basketball courts being in bad shape? Well, yes, they are. And I do, I do wish that the borough would put more thought and more money into that park. There are grants, you know, and you could apply for them. And people play on those courts. Kids have got nowhere else to play. This is a social justice issue. It is a social justice issue. Kids got nowhere else to play, so they play in the park. People walk their dogs in the park. People just come out and enjoy the fresh air in the park. There were people dancing in the park during COVID. And we have seen people with dance classes, there was actually a Christmas pageant where dancers were dancing in the park. So this is all wrong. The park is not blighted. That report that the RDA did was a lie. The Little League fields are well-kept. Those people spent a lot of time on that. So, you know, I just, and I want to say something about all the money that you think you're going to get. What about all the municipal? What about all the municipal services those people are going to need? Also, what's going to happen when the park floods? All those cars are going to, and all that fluid from the cars, all the transmission fluid, all the gasoline is going to get into the river. We're going to have to have rescuing people because they're in the middle of the flood? What are you guys thinking about? I just cannot believe that you're trying to take away our one and only park. There's nowhere else for the baseball fields to go, the basketball courts to go, nowhere else in this town. Is there anywhere for the type of recreation that we have available in Williamson Park? So, also, I want to comment on the Planning Commission meeting where the vote was interrupted by the borough manager. She should not have done that.
Three minutes.
The information that she gave them was wrong. And so I don't think that you guys can actually legally vote on item 9J because the Planning Commission--
Three minutes. Thank you, ma'am. I'll let you go over by 15.
The Planning Commission resisted one, and they did a wrong, just did it wrong according--
Thank you.
--to the rules of order. Thank you.
Joshua Coontz?
Hey, guys. My name's Joshua Coontz. I live at 40 Union Street, right over there. And, let's see, well, first off, thank you, guys, as always. This is a real rock-and-a-hard-place moment. I think we should all congratulate ourselves for participating in the wonders of philosophy and politic, which I think all of us as a community, this is really great. You know, one of the big things that is kind of tearing the world apart is for us to not be participating. So I think everybody on both sides should really be proud of ourselves because we're doing what we need to do to kind of have this society survive as we steamroll into cataclysm. But I do appreciate you guys in particular. That was a gauntlet, for sure. Even I don't even know if I should continue talking just because of how stressful it all was. So I was thinking of talking about 9F today. No, I'm just joking. It's about 9J. Obviously, it's about 9J. And 9I, or, no, W, the other one. So with the income tax thing, obviously, I think that's a really weird thing. The idealist in me is like, hey, why don't we just like only do it for like the top 50% income people? The richest top 50%, they can just get it. And if they're in like a housing crisis and they're going to lose it, why don't we have like an exemption thing for them or something? And then everybody else who's in a concerned situation can be like, ah, I don't have to worry about more money to pay. And only the people who have the money to pay can pay the money. But that's my idealist. I don't think that you guys have power in that. I don't know. But that's just kind of a solution that sounds really wonderful to me. As for the park, however, I think that there is some weird oddities because I could hear the kind of like linguistic-- I was at the planning meeting before. And the RDA was saying, he's like, okay, we're not stating that the park is blighted. They are saying that part of several sections in the designated areas were blighted. And it just so happens that because those are, the entire park needs to be included in the mapping rezoning, so that way we can be like, oh, the whole thing's continuous. And so I'm like, okay, so I can see the logic there. This is about of trying to extend to certain areas that do need the redevelopment, and that the park's just in the way.
One minute.
However, there is an issue with that there seems to be a route that can go around the park. And I also think that if we do include the park, there needs to be pretty stringent language to make sure that it's not included in it because this looks like a backdoor way of having the park designated as blighted. And if we are not in agreement that the park is blighted and that only these other parts are within the entire area, then we should probably be excluding that with something else. So I definitely think that minimal, the park stuff should be tabled until more specific language can be done so that way it's not giving a false impression about what's actually going on in the park. Or it should just be said no to. And it is really tough that the budget thing seems to be having this kind of like, ah, which of these two things, oh, we need money, you know, issue. So I do really not envy your position, and I hope that you guys have space and grace and peace of mind in your future so that way you can digest all of this, and I hope that you, you know, continue doing your best. I appreciate everything you're doing. That's my time.
Thank you. I cannot read the first name, but the last name is Franklin from 25 Delmore.
Alan?
Is it Alan? Okay. Laura, sorry if I mispronounced it. Go?
Yes.
Okay. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
78 Central Avenue. One of the interesting things at our house is a map that was done in around 1850 that shows the park. But the thing that most people don't know about the park is that there used to be a river there. And the river was filled in later and has never been developed. So my question is, if we have a river in the middle of the park that has been piled over with rubble and garbage and things like that over the many years, what is going to become of that when we try to develop the park? So I'm not making this up. I have the picture. I'll be glad to invite you to my house, or I'll bring it over here and show you the river running through. That's why it was called the island, and that's why we live on the island, because it's actually not an island anymore. It's now beautiful green space out there. But the problem is, it's going to change if you start developing it in ways that it was not meant to support. So until somebody does some real serious looking into that situation and determining whether that river is still there and whether it can support building, I would say we don't want any development. Now, beyond that, I love the park the way it is. I don't want to see any development anyway, but I'm bringing this to your attention because I don't want to go through the years and see something happen where a building falls down because, gee, there's a river under there that was not properly filled in and dealt with. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another name that I cannot make out. I can make out the first name. Richard, 37 South Lafayette Avenue. Okay. Name and address, and then you have three minutes, sir.
I'm sorry. I'm hard of hearing. I didn't, I didn't hear you.
That's fine.
I have lived in this town--
You have to give your name and address first. Name and address for the record.
Name and address.
I'm sorry. Wait just a second. Richard Mutek, 37 South Lafayette Avenue, Morrisville. I have lived in this town for 72 years. I am in favor of saving the ballparks in here. We refer to, I'm sorry, we refer to that as the island back in my day. And it's because it floods when the river floods. Not all the time, but there's enough times that it will flood. That's the reason the ballparks are down there. I am not in favor of putting a motel down there. I worked in the city of Trenton for 37 years. I watched two motels be built there and two motels that are empty, that are no longer there. Who is going to come to a motel in Morrisville when we already have a motel in Morrisville? The small shops. I don't see anybody going to those small shops when everybody orders online nowadays. Look at Bridge Street. Forty-some years ago, we had a chance of tearing down that block between Pennsylvania Avenue and Washington. And we, our elected officials, chose to just do a facelift. That block needs to be torn down. Build your motel on the corner there. Build your small shops there, and put your apartments above it. Where the bank is, that's empty. You're not going to get another bank to go in there. That building's not feasible. Put your condos there if you want to, but save the park.
One minute.
That's about just what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Tom Wisniewski?
Hi, Tom Wisniewski, 815 Crown Street. I agree that it's really nice that here in Morrisville, like I was talking to our reporter outside, that we can have civil conversation about things that we really disagree on and we're really emotional about. This has been actually a really nice discussion. Thanks for your time. Here in Morrisville, we historically, going back decades and generations, have said no. We're really good at saying no, and I could bore you for hours with stories about opportunities lost because the initial reaction is no. I sat back there for a lot of those, and, I mean, I can talk to you all the way back to the steel mill property in the 50s or 60s. Now, as Ms. Schill pointed out, this plan, I guess, has been around for about three years. I don't know. I found out about it about a year and a half ago, but I believe her that that's true. In that time, where have the alternatives been? Who has come up with another idea? I've heard, we hear nothing. I only know of one guy who's interested in spending $100 million here in Morrisville. If there are other ideas now, it'd be a really good time to bring them up. But I don't see them. And as someone else pointed out, well, there is no coincidence that the EIT and this vote are on the same agenda because it's all those no's from the past 50, 60 years that have put you in this inenviable position. It's not a new problem. There is no money, and you all know that. There are two vacant full-time slots on our police force right now. Guess what? You know, we can't hire two officers. There's no money to hire two officers. So the question becomes, what happens? And what happens ultimately if we all just keep saying no to everything is that there, as someone else, one of the other speakers says, there is no Morrisville. There is no park.
One minute.
We love our park. I actually really don't like a lot about the plan that's been proposed. I think it takes way too much of our park. And I would like to see conversation, serious conversation, about what's really appropriate there. However, you've got to keep the door open to conversation. And so I urge you to vote yes. I see it as a vote to keep the conversation going. You can't, we can't accomplish anything unless we talk. And that's, that's what we have to leave in your hands, to keep the path open. Because otherwise, an EIT, that's correct, it's not going to be enough. There's no amount of taxing that you guys could do that could be enough, and there's no amount of budget savings that can be enough. So I urge you to vote yes. Keep the door open. Thank you very much.
Public comment is closed, but I do want to say something. At the recommendations of the solicitor, we are pulling 9J from the agenda because of the procedural concerns mentioned here tonight. So 9J is no longer on the agenda.
Just have a quick, three-minute comment that I had prepared if we had to vote this evening. I would, I will not designate the whole area of the park for this particular certification just because one area needs addressing. In the plan, it states more than once that the parking area on North Delmore Avenue between Access Road to the canal and up to the water tower is not suited for development. So why consider this as part of your boundary? Boundary maps were done last year by Gilmore at the request of the former borough manager, months before this current council was even presented with the town center plan. A traffic study was done by Gilmore months before we were presented with the plan. These actions were never voted on. The wheels were in motion long before this body was presented with that plan. I apologize now for voting last year to let the conceptual plan move forward and do their due diligence, which I thought would prove futile because of stormwater issues, traffic concerns, and flooding concerns. But it came a little bit late to that party because the process had already started. This is unacceptable that we approve this plan for the park. It is nothing more, in my mind, as a land grab and a power grab, and I don't have the power to stop this by myself. So that's where I stand on the park. I've not been, I've been vocal about it, but I thought we were voting on it this evening. And that would have been my statement.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to six, which is approval of the minutes, 6A. Approval of the minutes for the Borough Council Regular Meeting of September 20th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it to move it along. Discussion?
There were a few corrections. I sent them to Virginia and our borough manager this morning. So I'm guessing they were taken care of. Mostly, they were grammatical.
All right. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seven zero. All right, we're moving on to seven, Finance, 7A, the Treasurer's Report. Everybody had a copy of that. 7B, it's a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Virginia?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Aloha?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes, seven zero. We'll move on to reports, 8A, Mayor's Report. The mayor is not here tonight, so 8B is the Police Chief's Report.
He was here.
Let's go to the next one.
We're going to move on to 8C, Manager's Report.
Everyone has this report before you. Do you have any questions?
Just one comment, if I may. Regarding 29 North Lafayette, I'm glad that we're finally moving forward on that. And I know that it's been a difficult property, but I think that we have to do something. It should never have taken all summer to get the grass cut there. It was six feet high, those trees. So I just think we should try to do it with a little less red tape next time because we did send it to committee, we sent it to Blight Committee, and they reviewed it. I think we have a policy that when you have a situation like that, we go in and we cut the grass, the borough cuts the grass, and then charges the estate or whomever. I'd like to see us to continue that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Is the chief coming back, or?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on that as well, Ted. I would have to argue that what Ms. Sherlock is recommending is that we just spend more money on things that aren't the borough's specific responsibility. Now, I'm fine with mediation once something gets to a certain level. But we don't have a historic track record of putting liens on properties or collecting anything. We've historically just done it. And I think that's a really bad policy, especially when we're talking about taking money from people's paychecks tonight. So I think we need to be prudent in our efforts and follow our procedures properly without just jumping to spending money on something that isn't really the borough's place to spend money on when we're talking about-- money on when we're talking about personal properties and private properties that aren't borough-owned. The suggestion that we should take quick, swift action on that before we're at a point where we're blighting a property, I completely disagree with. Thank you.
We'll just have to disagree, Mr. Jaeger, because from May to October is not swift enough.
I wasn't looking for an argument on this, Nancy. I was making my comment. I really wasn't looking for a discussion. Thank you, though.
Anyone else wish to comment on her report or have a question?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. I didn't have it in front of me. Number one, when you say your report, this is the Keystone Municipal Manager's Report, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Can you provide the public with an update on, I believe there was an update on there about the Hookah Lounge, the Club Lounge, and the Stockholm Building?
Yes, I was hoping that I could have the chief come to the podium and speak about the lounge, please. I would just like to thank the chief for the work that he accomplished due to this.
The clubhouse lounge is closed without a business. It was closed by the sheriffs two weeks ago. There will be a sale of the property inside of it within the next couple of weeks, but that is closed.
Thank you, chief.
The owner, he doesn't know yet, but I guess I can tell you, will be arrested by the LCB shortly for distributing liquor inside of that establishment. The Hookah Lounge is still open. It's not doing anything like the business it was. And I can't tell you really why, whether it's the idea the new ward in it was put into effect, but they are, they're monitored every night. At the most, they've had is 20 cars out there. So he's staying well within his limit of participants inside the building.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Chief, is there anything else? You weren't here for your report. Is there anything else you want to add?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you skip that over that quickly?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I ran down to use the van. I know there's a couple of things that are affecting police departments on the, on the agenda tonight. Maybe I'll just save it. If you have any questions at that point, I'll address those, the particular things that are on there.
The, the report this month, though, was very favorable with regards to crime.
Crime numbers still are down 28% for the year. But there are a couple of things on the agenda that you may have questions for. If they come up, I'll still be here for them.
Thank you, chief. Going back to the Manager's Report, does anybody else have any questions for the manager?
The Stockholm Building, do you have any updates? The Stockholm Building, the blight process was continued. The Planning Commission and the Vacant Property Committee did do blighted resolutions, which were, which are on the agenda this evening for approval. Once we follow through with that, we will certainly provide more updates as time permits with the process, but, but currently, that's the process that we're taking.
Just that the residents are always asking about the Stockholm, so this way they know we're moving on things. It's just government is really slow.
Yes, yes, we are. And just to touch upon some of the things that were just notated, I just arrived in your municipality in the middle of August, and I believe a lot of these issues have been on your agendas for some time, and we're working diligently to take care of a lot of these issues. Unfortunately, these types of issues do take a lot of time because we do not own these properties. They are owned by other persons, as Councilman Jaeger had notated. I know that some councilpersons, like Ms. Sherlock, they would like to see immediate activity from the borough and utilizing our resources that we do have for the maintenance of these properties and then trying to bill or lean a property and get those monies in the end. Unfortunately, sometimes we just do not have the manpower to accomplish those items. So, and I just wanted to touch upon how this did get rectified. We actually contracted out with a contractor, a subcontractor, to accomplish this, so the property will get leaned. But just to explain to the public that this sometimes does take time, because again, we do not own these properties, so there are certain steps that we must take until we get from point A to point B with these properties, but we will try our best to work diligently to get the town cleaned up as much as possible now and in the future.
Anyone else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to move on to action items, and I stated before, we're going to move 9W up to the front of the line. 9W is a call for a motion to approve the ordinance to levy an earned income tax on the residents and non-residents of the borough of Morrisville pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act for the general revenue purposes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. We have discussion, discussion. Anyone want to say anything?
I have a quick question. Go ahead. Just going.
Go ahead, Mr. Jaeger.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I know, it's no shock that I'm opposed to this. I just want to bring up two points that really haven't been spoken about much, but it was kind of touched on in public comment. One is, we have very few competitive advantages when it comes to bringing in new businesses. If I'm a business owner looking to open up a shop and my choices are here or Falls Township, I'm going to Falls Township because they don't have any IT, because I'm not going to subject myself and my, my, my employees to something that I don't need to, I can just open up right down the street. We have no other competitive advantage, literally. Our housing market, it's our competitive advantage. We're going to, we're talking about throwing away the one competitive advantage that Morrisville has for, for house values and for new business. It, that's all we got. We, we get rid of that, and we got nothing else. Take into consideration the people that can't afford it, all that good stuff, you know, the, the fact that we had somebody up there saying that if you don't have a EIT currently and you vote no, it's a conflict of interest, well, I'll tell you. Because of where the main office for the company I work for is, I do pay it. Doesn't affect me. I've said this a million times, it doesn't affect me personally. My wife works in Philadelphia. We're not going to get a dime of that. It doesn't affect my household, but it affects other households. So to say that it's a conflict of interest is insanity for somebody that doesn't pay it because it has nothing to do with it. When I'm voting, and hopefully when others are voting, it's not about your own self-interest, right? It's about the people we represent, and that's what it should be about. And I have had too many people that I represent tell me how it will affect them, and it's not good. This comes up, this isn't new information, this comes up all the time. So again, I know it's not, it's not something that your shocked is here that I'm opposed to, but we have one competitive advantage and we're about to throw it away. It. We'll have nothing else. We'll have nothing else to offer homeowners. We'll have no, potential homeowners. We'll have nothing else to offer new businesses or even existing businesses. We're going to be with no advantage whatsoever as a town, and that hurts the town. Doesn't hurt me personally, hurts the town. Thank you.
I, I'd like to add a comment to this, along with Councilman Jaeger. It's no secret that I'm against this also, and it's no secret out there that I'm against this, yet over the last couple of weeks, I have received dozens of emails from residents telling me that they're opposed to the EIT. Now, either they don't know that I'm against it, or they think I'm going to change my mind, but I have not received one email, not one, from a resident saying they are in favor of the EIT. I have not, I have not received one email saying, Scott, you need to change your mind and vote for the EIT. Not one. I haven't received one. I mean, I, I understand that times are difficult right now, but they're difficult for everybody. And if it comes, if it comes to the day in the future where, I mean, when I'll be retired, I won't be paying the EIT, but I might have to make a sacrifice. I might have to move into an apartment, or I might, I might have to make, I might have to sacrifice, but I don't see this EIT with how it's going to socket the people. Mr. Brigham on Prospect, that number is, that he mentioned tonight, 123%, is incredible. I mean, my, with a, with a 1%, it will double what I paid in my county and borough taxes last year. That's, that's crazy, and, and I can't do it. I cannot vote for, for the people that have took the time to email me to say, Scott, please do not do this. And they lay, and every, we've heard every reason, Mike made several of them tonight, that people, people just don't want it. So I, I, to those of you that emailed me, thank you, I'm, I'm voting for you. I'm voting, it's not up to me, it's up to the people that, that elected me. It's up to my neighbors in the second ward and every one of them, and well, not everyone that emailed me was in the second ward or a few other wards too, but the people, people wanted me to vote no on it, and so I'm, that's why I'm voting no. It's not just me, it's, it's not a conflict of interest, it's the people that have emailed me said no, don't vote for it. So again, my vote is no. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sherlock? Go ahead.
Yes. So it is, and it is no secret that I have supported this, and there are reasons I'm supporting this. I, I will have to pay it. I don't want to have to pay it, but we have, we were told two weeks ago by our borough manager, there was a reality check to this council, some council that didn't realize it, and the, and the community, that we have a deficit of $500,000 when we start out this year, 2022. So, that being said, it's, that will be close, and our, our millage is worth about 60,000, so we're talking maybe nine mills. We cannot put a nine-mill increase on this community. And so one of the ways around that, yes, is the earned income tax, and part of this is because there were four years when there was no tax raise. There were, taxes were not raised, and this is how you get to this point. You have to raise them incrementally as the year goes, as the years go on, when your, when your expenses increase. The other thing is, the figure we were given, it could be anywhere between 180,000 or 225,000, that's already going to other communities. Why do we want to just give up that money to other communities when we could have that right here in Morrisville? So there's four mills right there. Now, I did have this particular ordinance, though. I had two questions. I think the threshold is way too low. It's set at $12,000. That would be for, you know, some part-time college student, but I think it should be raised. I think it should be raised to 18,000 or 20,000, and if you were under that threshold, you wouldn't be paying. And then I don't know what the thoughts are. There, there, well, let me, let me, not that I think that you don't know what's happening here, but there is, there is not enough of a majority here for this. It's not going to pass tonight. So all of you who don't want it to pass, you can be, rest assured, tonight it will not pass. But I'm still trying to make the, the argument as to why we need the money. Now, I can, I can refer to our borough manager if she likes to add a few more things. I also want to let the public know, I'm somewhat insulted, and I think maybe some of us are, the whole thing about personal agendas and mismanagement of money, if, those comments were made this evening, there's, there's no mismanagement of money that I'm aware of. We get audits done every year. We go through these audits, the audit company comes in and explains it to us and shows us where our money is or isn't. So there's, and there's no, well, not that I'm aware of, personal agendas here where people are spending money or putting money in their pocket, it's just not there. There's no money to put in pockets. But our taxes, and I think there are a lot of people that don't realize this because their taxes are paid through their mortgage. 76% of the tax you pay to this town is school tax, which we have no power over, no power whatsoever. So 24% of your bill, take 24% of your bill, and that's what you're paying us every month, to have a county tax and a borough tax, and it's probably not much more than your cable bill every month. And if you think about the services that you get at the county level that are free to you, you have parks, you have libraries, you have the sheriff's department if you would need it, you have the justice department, there are many, you have the Bucks County Planning Commission, you have all these places at the county that are available to you should you need them. It's just, so if you, taking that aside, it's very small price to pay. I realize that we don't have, excuse me. I think I would love to be able to say our services were more pristine. I'd love to be able to say that our park, you know, is, is shiny bright, but it's not, but it is what it is, and we use it. And I, I think that no money has been put in in the last few years, and I honestly, if, if you believe in conspiracies, which I don't usually, but I do believe that there are very few consequences, I mean, not consequences, now I've lost the word, but anyway, how, how all of a sudden, you know, the park is deemed blighted? Like, how does that happen? I mean, so now I'm getting off of my tangent here, but bottom line is, your tax bill, if the EIT is not implemented, there will be a tax increase. So it can either come by EIT or it can come by an increase. I don't know what that increase will be. We have our first meeting tomorrow night. I don't know if our borough manager needs to, you know, can address that at this time, but I, I understand nobody wants taxes. Nobody wants to raise them. No one wants to be responsible for raising them. Sometimes it has to be the brave thing to do. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, and I will promise to not say another word for a while.
I want to hold you to that.
You can. So I just want to, I just want to say that I appreciate those comments, but there are a couple of things I'd like to add. One is, the, there isn't always the need to incrementally increase taxes if you change operations, and when we talk about the four years that were just identified, there were, there were operational changes that were incrementally imposed that were lowering the cost of running the borough. This council, based on its majority, changed that direction. That's what's creating the need, because no matter how many people we have on the police force currently that are part-time, full-time, no matter how many people are actually working in the borough, we have to budget to the number that we've approved. So regardless of, hey, and, and our former mayor pointed out, you know, there are two vacancies that haven't been filled, right? Well, right, but we have to budget for them because this council approved it. So unless you're going to change the manning tables, you're going to have those, we'll call them incremental increases, because we're adding, even if we're not hiring them right away, you're budgeting for them because you have them in your budget. So we are making, building a budget around the people that we say they can hire. Since we've changed our direction in what we consider operational sound or effectiveness, and we are, we are moving back towards hiring individuals and getting away from utilizing services more, where you're only paying for what you need to get done, when you need to get it done, we are going to have to raise taxes. Nancy is absolutely right, but this isn't a matter of there wasn't incremental increases because there were incremental decreases that you always forget to mention. So I just want to make sure the public understands that those incremental decreases in costs are why there weren't increases in taxes. So I just want to make sure we're clear, and again, I'm still opposed to this. I understand we need the money because of how we're, how we're preparing to operate going forward, though. As long as we all are agreement that's the case, we're in good shape, but to sit there and act like there was some kind of, something done incorrectly is just misleading, because there were things being done to avoid it. It's not like there was no tax increase and there was no change to operations. They went hand in hand to balance that budget. So we are saying as a council majority that that's not the direction we want to go. Now, as a council majority, we could say that, and we have said that, so now we have to pay for it. I'm a little upset that we're talking about increasing people's taxes even more, the working class even more, and we still haven't even talked about the fact that Morrisville Little League still has not paid their fees in years. We had a couple of years where it worked, and we are talking about asking, asking the working man to pay more, and we are completely lax on the fact that Morrisville Little League is in control of one of the biggest properties in our town. is in control of one of the biggest properties in our town, and they pay nothing. Nothing! They contribute nothing to the, to the, to the cost that we incur for, for owning and managing that park. So I'm just completely flabbergasted that we could be so ready to increase taxes on a person that's working for a living, making 12,000, even 18 or 20,000, we're talking about, they're, they're the haves. The 18, 20,000 dollar a year people are the haves that should carry this on their backs, but Morrisville Little League shouldn't pay a dime. What is wrong here? That seems fundamentally incorrect. Now, as I promised Ted, you won't hear from me until I'm through.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We go to go, Justin?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. Being up here four years now, this isn't the first time that at the beginning of budget season, we heard there's a $500,000 deficit. The borough manager has stated she's been here two months, she hasn't looked at it that well. We haven't had any budget meetings. They start tomorrow. I think we're putting the cart before the horse, even even voting for this. And I said that when they advertised it. We don't know the figures yet. We don't know that we even need it. And we're also advertising this, I don't even know, I'm sitting here on council, I don't even know what percentage we're advertising, because it hasn't, it's not here. Is it 1%? Is it half a percent?
It's, it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance as 1%.
Correct.
But nobody reading the agenda knows, they have to go either see the advertisement or read the whole ordinance off of our, is it on our web?
The ordinance is on the website, it's on the, it's on every media site that we have, it's on Facebook, it was provided in council packets.
I don't believe the actual ordinance is on Facebook. The, the public announcement is. I don't think there's a full document.
It has the amount in it.
Doesn't it?
And we also state that if you, if you would like to view the copy, to go on our website, it's there. Or if you cannot access a website, you may come into the borough office and you may view it, we have copies there for you. We, we've made every, every bit of information that we could possibly make available to the public.
I'm not saying we aren't.
Yes.
Maybe I'm saying we aren't, we aren't giving it all out there, but yes, I agree, we've, we've made good strides in putting it out there. But it's not here on the agenda, people go to the website, pull up the agenda first. I push for a lot of stuff on our website, I understand there's a lot of stuff there. It's not the most well organized, and I know it's something you coming in here will work on, I know that for sure. But I just think, you know, the information, if I wasn't sure, I mean, I saw the ordinance, I get my packet and I read it and it was 1%, but there was nothing in the high level that went out to everybody that I saw. I can stand corrected, I may be wrong, I'll admit if I am. But I think we're putting the cart before the horse, we haven't sat down and really dug through the stuff. As Mike mentioned, Morrisville Little League hasn't paid a fee, and when I was looking at the budget you sent, we had a $12,000 increase for the parks. $10,000 of that that Morrisville Little League would be paying in the past would cover, you know, 98% of it, it's little things like that. So I think we have a lot to look at in the next month or so to finalize the budget.
To answer your question, council had asked me to put together a preliminary budget for the last week's finance meeting, which I did. And we had the finance meeting, and I had provided that information, showing that this is our worst-case scenario of, with contractual agreements and so forth, of what would, what we would be up against. From my understanding, there's negotiations going back and forth with the Little League, and I think that is like 3,500 or so dollars, I'm not.
Yeah, we're, we're currently still negotiating with the Little League, as Jim O'Brien acknowledged earlier. And as Mike Yeager knows, because he was on the subcommittee with me, we, we started out as a, as a starting offer to continue the 7,000 that we were charging annually in the years leading up to the, the, the last MOU that expired last year. We proposed, we've offered to cut that in light of COVID impact to substantially less for this year, and then continue with the 7,000 going forward. So even if we get, even if we, we reach an agreement and start collecting, it's going to be 7,000 at best. We're not, it's not a windfall, it's not going to replace the amount that we would get from either an earned income tax or.
No, but I'm saying, one, one line item of the park was $12,000 increase. And Judith, you reminded me, when you said your budget, you said worst-case scenario slash wishlist, wishlist. So, you know, I think there's room to be trimmed.
If I may, it's not so much wishlist as needs list. So at this point, what you see and what you have before you as this needed 2022 budget, these are needs. We didn't put anything on the wishlist, on, that was on the wishlist on here, these are needs. Roof improvements to the building, server and firewall for police department, computerization, many different types of things that are needed. It's not a wishlist. So basically, what we would have to do at this point is say, all right, where could we cut? So basically, what happens when you say this is, you cut your services, and your services are already cut. So that would be a determination of council persons, when we do have these budget meetings coming up, to go through this and say, all right, where do we cut? It's very, we're down to the minimum with the Public Works Department, we're down to the minimum with the library, we're down with the library employees, we're down to the minimum with the police department. So we're, we're up against some challenges. And I've heard a lot of things said, you know, in regards to management. I've only been here since, there's not much I can, I can say about that. And I also take defense regarding the planning commission meeting, and I just wanted to make note of that. There were things being done that were not supposed to be done in that manner, and I was trying to help the planning commission, and I was thanked for that at the meeting. So I see a lot of people shaking their head yes, but that's not what was said this evening. So in no way and by no means did I do anything against the planning commission or direct them in any negative way to vote in whatever manner they did. I had no opinion in that vote, and I made no comments whatsoever, and I still do not have an opinion. I was trying to help the planning commission not get in any trouble as to how things were being procedurally done. So again, I, I take great offense as to what was said this evening regarding that, and I just want to make that clear. And if there's anybody that would like to talk about that later, I appreciate it. But moving forward with the budget, yes, we will have to sit and say, okay, can we cut services anymore if, if this is where we're at? But looking at the millage difference that we would need with what we have proposed at this time is 9.89 mills increase. So that would mean the property taxes would increase 9.89 with what we have before us. Do I believe that we can cut in certain areas? I do believe we can cut in certain areas, but we'll be cutting, again, we'll be cutting things that will affect the municipality. And that, that's really what I need to say. So if you do see things that are cut, you know, are not happening, and you want to know why, it's because we're having to cut those services. It's, it's not, that's not the most desirable thing to do, but if that's what council chooses to do, to try to have less of a millage increase, I understand, and I hope that the public and the residents understand also. So really, it's a matter of what does the borough want to do moving forward? Do we want to try something different with the EIT tax? It's a different perspective. We, as, as Ms. Schreulak mentioned, we're losing, I believe it's 290-some thousand dollars worth of revenue right now currently that's being sent, it's being taken out of people's paychecks that are here, and it's being sent to other municipalities. So in all essence, as someone in the audience had mentioned, please make sure and check your paychecks, because you may have something being taken out currently, and you may not even know that, of where it's going. So that is one of the issues and one of the items that is, is something to think about. I'm not for taxing. Most municipalities I work in, I try very hard to not have a tax increase or to have a minimal tax increase. You know, if we have to do it yearly, a minimal, I'm for cutting all, all the fat off of the budget that I can possibly cut. Again, at this time, we don't have any fat, so to cut off of the budget. So we really have to think hard as to how we're going to do things. I've talked about some creative ways this evening to the council, about some items that we have moving forward, and hopefully we're able to accomplish those things. So this is not always something that's a mismanagement of the budget. Things happen. Sometimes something comes up that, you know, you have no idea that's going to happen, maybe, again, the roof. If we don't put money aside and plan for all of these things that are going to come up in the future, like laptops in the police cars, or, or the roof, or heating systems, or all of those items that are needed, we have to begin to, start to put funds aside and plan. We need to put a plan together for the future. Those are things that we need to do. Right now, my major goal is to try to figure out how we're going to move forward into 2022 and provide services. That's what I'm trying to do, and I appreciate all the hard work that council's doing, you know, with looking over this budget and, and possibly suggesting where we might be able to cut, or any creative ideas. You know, it's a working document, as Justin just said. I don't think it's premature to talk about the issue, because this deficit has been a rolling deficit. And I brought that to council's attention, and it'll continue to roll if we don't do something to stop that. So that's where I'm saying we have to do something. I can't make the decision for council. I can certainly put the information before them, and that's what I'm doing. The proposal was EIT tax, or we will need to increase property taxes. And in my view, the property taxes are very, very high to begin with. The thought process that I had that is if we weren't able to adopt an EIT, that eventually, once things were under control, there could, could be a possibility of reducing property taxes moving forward. That was my thought process. It has been done in other municipalities. The EIT tax is very prevalent in other municipalities, as you've, as you've heard someone from the public speak this evening and talk about that. Again, I'm not for taxes, I'm for solutions. And I know that someone said, well, you need to, you know, review the budget and see where there's problems or something's been going wrong. That is exactly what I did. And some of these numbers that are in the budget are not accurate numbers. You can't say that we're going to spend $10,000 on a line item when we very well know that that line item is going to be at least $50,000 that year. That's not a real budget. And what that does is that gets you into the position that we're in now, with a rolling deficit. So we can, we can sit back and we can make believe with these numbers again, moving forward, that that's what they'll be, and they won't be that at the end of the year. That's not mismanagement, that's not the manager's fault. And I need people to hear that. That is an inaccurate budget, and you cannot continue to do things that way. You have to propose what the actual numbers may be. You cannot propose numbers that you already know are not really real. So moving forward, unfortunately, there's a lot of tough decisions here this evening. And I mean this just as much as council is. I, I want to try to provide as many services as I possibly can to the residents with the least amount of taxes. That's what my goal will be. But the reality is, we need to figure out a way to get there, and a good way to get there. So I apologize, I believe I just took the floor. I'm, I'm very passionate about the budget. I'm, thank you.
You did, I just have one comment on all your stuff, Judy. And I've made it for the last three years, and it hasn't gone anywhere, so maybe you'll get further with it. Our agreement with the MMA has not increased, you know, our costs for our workers, their salaries have gone up, their weight, their benefits have gone up, the cost of gasoline has gone up, and that agreement has stayed the same for the past, I don't know, six or eight years. And I know Jane's out there cringing right now because I say this.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and I plan on visiting the authority meeting that is coming up very shortly. So Jane, you'll be seeing me there.
I do want to say something. The size of our Public Works limits the workforce that the municipal authority has, and it has been decreasing steadily to the point where the municipal authority needs to hire outside contractors most of the time to perform the work. And that's going to continue with the size that Public Works is currently at. So being a board member on the MMA and having to deal with, with, with being responsible for the rate holders for water and sewer, the municipal authority can no longer justify giving the borough $650,000 when we have to use contractors more and more. So I, as a council, I am telling you, do not count on that money being the same going forward. So. And then, I forgot what I said, I just wanted to add that, you know, we talk about the budget and spending within our limits and making cuts, but we also agree as a body to incremental increases in salaries. There's also insurance costs that we have no control over. There's litigation costs that we have no control over, and I'm not quite sure what the annual budget has been for, the budget and amount has been for the solicitor, but that's never been accurate.
Correct.
And it's been brought up before, and people are shouted down, belittled, talked over, and if you don't believe me, you can go back and look at past meetings, you know, the recordings of the past meetings where, at the time, Councilwoman Chronicle had brought this up, and she was basically shouted down and, and belittled for even speaking up on this. So it has been an issue, and I'm not blaming any particular council, because this has been the way this borough has balanced its budget. It has taken, and it's taken numbers that are not realistic. You know, when you budget $35,000, when you know your solicitor's costs are three times that every year, how is that ethical? How can you approve that budget and then rail against the talk of raising taxes when we know that's not realistic? Most people don't realize how much goes on in our office, how much our solicitor is needed, and how much our police actually do. We don't have the best services, but they, they definitely go far and beyond what we have budgeted for them and what they get paid. And I'm not saying everybody should get a pay increase for doing above and beyond, but we need to realize that this borough may just be a tiny little borough of barely 10,000 people, but there are some real big city or big township issues that come through that office every day. And most people don't realize that. You may live in Morrisville, small, little quaint town along the river, but we have real township-sized issues going on here every day. And you can't keep getting blood from a stone. And that's what we've been doing, and we've been playing with the numbers far too long, and this manager has said no to doing that. And we will find out Tuesday if council wants to go back to past practices that have gone on for years, many years, to making up a budget that's just balanced and not realistic. And that's, that's all I have to add. And if anybody doesn't have anything else to add, we're going to put this to a vote.
Well, I have one thing. I think when the residents talk about mismanagement, they're not really talking about the manager and making a mistake. What I think is that they're talking about council's past decisions. So for instance, the library roof, I've been hearing about the library roof since like 2014, and nobody has ever put any money aside to fix that library roof. And so if we had fixed it in 2014 or 2015, it may not be costing us what it is currently because there's seven years of deterioration going on. There was leakage into windows, so who knows even if those windows need to be fixed. So when they're talking about mismanagement, I think they're really talking about how we are spending and what we're doing with our money. But again, I'm just putting words in people's mouths right now.
And the, the word deferred maintenance has been something that even the prior manager had mentioned. We, historically, as a borough, defer things because of the size of our budget.
I get it, but.
Put things off, it's like.
But it just keeps exploding.
Yes, and that, that's what's happened.
Yeah. A $500 car repair turns into a $2,000 car repair.
And the average person does that as well. I have a little leak in my roof, well, maybe I can patch it for now. It may work for a while, but we know it's going to leak again eventually. We've been deferring things for way too long, and whether or not. We've been deferring things for way too long, and whether or not this ordinance passes tonight, the public needs to know that this budget we've had before is not realistic, and two things are going to happen. We're either going to have to raise taxes, or we're going to have to cut services to levels that you are not going to like, but there is no alternative.
I think the public needs to know what those possible services that we'd be cutting.
Yeah, I think the best thing is for tomorrow. We've beat the fort.
Well, I know these folks probably want to get home, but I just...
Yeah, I think we...
But there's very little, I mean, our Public Works Department right now is our manager, is the manager, John, and...
Two people.
Two people. That's it. That's who handles every, all the public works out there.
And we can talk about not budgeting for additional public works, but then we also have to realize we're not going to get $650,000 from the municipal authority for work that's not getting done, so.
Well, I also have to add something to that because the municipal authority should be paying for the prior year. It's not a forward-looking thing because we don't know what those expenses are. So when you say they're not going to be, they need to be because the expenses that we're budgeting in 2022 are really for the work of 2021.
Well, they've actually paid last year in advance. The last budget, they paid the $650,000 in advance. That even then, we were in such dire straits.
I understand, but that 650 may not be an accurate number because they may have used more or less of our guys.
There's been arguments that, there's been arguments for that they need to go up because they're costing us more than what they're giving us, and then there's the side where we're not getting what we're giving you the $650,000 for.
I get that, but it's still a backward-looking thing when you're budgeting forward.
At this point, the MMA has two choices, a road crew of its own, which is, I believe, the direction it's going, or continuing to have to use outside contractors, which is what they're currently doing. So that's another thing we need to think about in the next year or two, whether or not that money is going to be the same, because it probably won't be.
Right, but then we don't have those services that we need to provide to them going forward either.
Right.
So, and these are all things that, you know, is part of the budget process, and the unknowns are what is what drives some of these numbers.
In the past, and I'm not accusing any individual council of anything, but this has been looked as like a $650,000 check from daddy to cover things, and then we'll worry about whether or not the numbers match up later. That's been, that's been the way it's been done, and again, that has to end. The budgets have to be realistic, and if they're not, then we're just kicking the can down the road continuously, and they just can't keep going on like that.
Some years ago, we started with regards to the water, the water department and the water budget, and in keeping track of how much they actually use and, you know, what the bottom line is, and I believe it's been, the percent's been getting a little bit less and less. So even though they were paying us the 650, it wouldn't necessarily come out to costing 650 for the year, so.
And then there's also been, it was 600,000, I believe, four years ago, and then it went to 650, and then the municipal authority took back some responsibility for costs that the borough had on the water side, which would be fire hydrants and stuff, and that was another 50,000. So in reality, there has been a $100,000 increase, and this will be my last year, so I'm in year five of my five-year term with the MMA, so within five years, it's been a $100,000 increase. So there hasn't been zero increase, so.
Regarding the library roof, there was $10,000 put in two years in a row. Can you tell us, Ted, what is going on with Vic Cicero's seat, because I know he doesn't come to the meetings?
It's irrelevant.
Well, you were talking about the MMA, so I'm just...
It's not relevant. Vic Cicero's not relevant to our budget at this moment. Can, anybody else have anything to add to this particular thing, otherwise we're going to call for a vote. All right. Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
No.
Mr. Lawal?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion fails. All right, we're going to move back on to the original 9A, which is a call for a motion to adopt the 2021 Halloween policy.
So moved.
I'll second it to move it forward. Discussion. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
Mr. President, just for the public knowledge, do we want to read that? I know it's late at night, but, or at least give the highlights that it's...
I don't have it in front of me, and at this point, I'm not quite sure I can even read it.
Obey the speed limits, watch the children walking along the road, buy or make colored, highly visible costumes for the children.
The Borough Portal. It's on everything.
Yeah.
I think more importantly, it's Halloween night from what time to what time.
It's Sunday, October 31st, from, well, I guess when it gets dusk, until 8:00 PM. And if you're 16 or under, you're supposed to be accompanied by a responsible adult. That seems kind of high, but 16-year-old part. And the chief didn't mention anything, but usually he has extra patrols out. Is that correct, chief?
Yes.
You have extra patrols on Halloween night?
Yes, he said yes.
Thanks. I didn't know if he was responding.
Yeah, he did. You didn't hear him?
I heard him say yes.
Come on.
Can we move forward?
She was asked to read the highlights. 9B, a call for a motion to acknowledge receipt of $41,461.07 from the PA Department of Order General to approve distribution of 100% to the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
My only comment is this is, comes in from the state and goes out from us to the fire company, so it's an in and out.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. 9C has also been withdrawn, so we're going to move on to 9D. Call for a motion to ratify execution of COPS grant extension. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion?
Yes, my discussion is there's no date or anything on this, so do we have any more details on that?
An email went to the COPS grant administrator, and we're awaiting, I believe, unless the chief does have an answer on that.
You're saying two years.
Two years. Thank you, chief.
And it's nothing other than an extension to use the funds that have already been allocated, right?
Correct. Would that be two years in the month of September, since it ended in September, I'm guessing?
Two years and the end date.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. 9E, a call for a motion to ratify execution of the Capitol Health Systems, Inc. ambulance extension agreement dated 9/23/2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. President, I have a couple comments.
Go ahead, sir.
I appreciate you extending this through, what, October or so? I don't think it's going to be long enough, given how busy you are in budget season. I think we may want to amend this to be like through December or maybe the first quarter of next year.
I have been working with the Capitol Health regarding this to provide us with an updated version instead of just the extension, so I think the extension, forgive me, extension dated 9/23.
Yeah, I think we got that in our last packet last week.
Yes, I thought that we would be okay with this till next month, to have something before council for a new full agreement.
My only issue for that is are we advertising to see if there's anybody else that wants to do it? I mean, originally, we got proposals from three or four different EMS services, plus Capitol Health was the only private sector.
I was unaware that council wanted to do that, so...
I think it might be a decision we need to make now or in the future.
What's the extension, what was the agreement, the extension you had guys for?
I'm thinking it was 60 days, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was two months, I think, from the end of September, or August or September.
I was negotiating some items with them due to the fact that we have the deficit in the budget, so I was hoping to come back with a new agreement with some of the items that I'm negotiating with them.
I appreciate that. What's the legality of it? Does council have to go out and ask for, you know, proposals and solicit them for services?
We'd have to do an RFP and advertise.
The ambulance service. Do we have to re-advertise since the contract is not...
Isn't that just a service?
We need an RFP. Professional service. Well, I mean, if he wants to advertise, we would need to come up with an RFP.
Not him, but if all of council would like to...
Yes, that's what I meant.
Would like to ask for proposals for service, then we could do that as well.
Have there been any issues with Capitol Health that we need to correct or identify?
I haven't heard any.
I haven't heard any.
I think you're doing a great job from everything I hear, but I also know as the borough...
I work for their local...
We should consider, seeing if somebody can do it for a lower price.
With the same result?
I can, I can tell you that you're not, just simply not, based on the number of members, of the number of units they have, the unit they have up, being that it's a one-on-one, being it's 24-hour service, being that when the squad is out, they have, they have someone from Trenton come in, for $92,000 plus their billing, which they don't collect 100% on, is on the cheap side. But we can try it if we want.
I mean, I just know the last time when we did this, there was...
And one of them, one of them was an ambulance squad that could barely handle its own calls, let alone take on our area.
Right, but since it's been three years, there may be another hospital in the area that wants to get into the, doing something like this.
Maybe.
We don't know unless we ask.
We can do, we can do an RFP. I have no problem.
You need to vote for that? Is this what, I mean...
I wouldn't, we can't do it tonight. It's not imminent.
No, because if we didn't advertise...
We can do it next month, but if we'd like to...
So would you like to provide me with a longer extension so we have time to put together an RFP and put it out to bid?
Yes.
Wasn't this already signed, though, and dated the 23rd?
It was, yes.
That's why we're just ratifying it.
Correct.
So, so you'd have to go back again for another extension? Was that what you're thinking?
Correct.
I don't, I don't think we need to do that. I think we're fine.
I don't think we do either.
I think if we haven't had any complaints, we think that the, that full coverage, 24 hours, I don't know. I don't see any, the need right now, but...
There's only like two other legitimate entities in the area that may consider even it, and if we're okay with it, I'm fine. I'm fine with Capitol, but like I said, I work for their major competitor, so, I mean, you'll save me an extension at a vote, so.
Now we're going to do this.
Are we just going to ratify this for now?
Yes.
How long? When is the extension run? I'm a little confused with the date. This runs through when?
I think the end of November.
All right, so they'll give us an opportunity to put something more permanent if that's the way we seem to be going on the agenda for next month.
And by permanent, you mean an RFP?
Like, no, you that, or a year in general?
Oh, okay.
At us into the next calendar year? Okay, all right, so the recommendation is to move forward with this motion and vote on this, and revisit an extension in November if that's what council...
You're not adding that to the motion, though. You're just explaining.
No, this is just explaining it. So, the motion that stands has been, has it been set?
Yes, Justin and Helen.
All right, so any more discussion on it, otherwise we're going to put it to a vote. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, hearing none. Motion passes 7-0. Call for a motion to award contract for the 2020 curb ramp program to JDC Construction Services, Inc. for a total contract amount of $48,411.0 for the base bid and alternate bids, number one and number two, to be paid from the 2020 CDBG funds. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Yes, this is being done now out of last years because they're always a year behind. Always done after, it's done after the paving is done and...
Of course, I have to look at the bid sheet with a microscope.
I'm not responsible for type size. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. 9G, a call for a motion after discussion regarding the execution of the Bucks County Planning Commission Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program contingent form regarding share contribution costs. Who makes this stuff? 2022 for 1 million.
1,000.
1,000, sorry. 1,000, that would be nice. That would solve a lot of problems. $1,388.83 2023, $1,457.41 2024, $1,714.60 and 2025 for $1,714.16.
So moved, or do you want the discussion first?
No, yeah.
It says after discussion. I just was wondering, since, do we have any idea how many people in the borough actually use this? I don't think we've ever tracked it, so I was just curious. I mean, it's a small amount, and it definitely is a great thing to have. I'm hoping people take advantage of, guess is what I'm saying. You use it, okay, that's good. All right, I think we should keep it.
I do, too.
And in one, two, three, four years' time, it's going to go up like $300.
Yeah, it's not a significant...
It's not that much.
All right, anyone else? All right.
Now you want the motion?
And now we're going to move it to a motion. Can I have a...
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. 9H, call for a motion to approve advertising of an ordinance of the Borough of Morrisville, Bucks County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the Borough of Morrisville animals' ordinance, specifically prohibiting owning roosters within the limits of the Borough of Morrisville. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
So, I was a little confused because I thought we were going to add roosters to the noise ordinance.
The animals ordinance is the noise ordinance. They're the same.
I know, but it says that you're prohibiting owning roosters, and I don't remember that as the conversation. I thought it was about the noise so that we could implement the ordinance when people had complaints.
The discussion was to remove roosters from the borough.
Correct.
Because the noise wasn't that level, and this was not worth having roosters.
And it was more, just so everybody knows, it was more than one particular location. This is not something that was brought up as a question of one particular residence.
And it wasn't personal favor.
Right, and it wasn't a personal favor. It's actually, there were conversations in multiple locations throughout the borough that the roosters had been an issue, so it wasn't just one location that had this come to light, because there have been, as many people have spoken to, you know, to not prohibit roosters, there have been probably twice as many who have complained about the noise and the locations of the hen houses, the hens' structures next to the property line when they're not supposed to be on the property line, and so this has been discussed as to multiple issues that we've been having with roosters and chickens in general, but...
So what does this mean to people who already own roosters?
Well, as of right now, it would be, we're just advertising, but in order to pass, yes, they would have to remove their roosters from their property.
And, and so then people, that person was correct, like when you buy a little chick, you don't know if it's a rooster or a hen, so... That is true.
That's fair.
So what do we do with them?
Well, if you don't know what it is, you're not technically violating the ordinance yet, but once you learn is when you'll have to move on from the interval.
Adopt a rooster.
Anyone else?
I just have a quick comment. The only complaint I received from this was the woman who came in here and talked about it, who somebody else pointed out tonight was a case of the Hatfields and McCoys, so I'm going to be a no in this.
Anyone else? All right, to keep track of the votes, we're going to do a roll call. Virginia, you still wait?
Did we have a second?
Yeah, we did. I'm sorry.
I believe it was Mr. Paul.
Correct.
Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. LaMple?
No.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
A four-three then, right?
Four-three, motion passes to advertise.
Thank you.
Moving on to nine L, a call for a motion after discussion regarding a request for a temporary waiver of the 60-hour limit for part-time officers through blank, currently through October 31st, 2021. Discussion?
Discussion? I'd like to say we should make it till January 2nd, 2022. It puts them through the holiday. I don't even know if that's what he wants, but.
I have to agree with you.
It's already the end of October.
I'd like to see it be November, because we're only currently down one officer who's out on administrative leave, and once that officer returns, he should be back to staff.
But if he doesn't use it, it doesn't harm. I mean, this is, this is why we're here again voting on it, because last week, or last month, we only gave it five weeks. Now we're going to do another five weeks.
Well, it's a policy for a reason. I mean, if we're going to keep pushing it back six months or a year at a time, why even have it?
So are you covered through the end of the year? Well, I couldn't tell from that spreadsheet you sent, so, like, what are you short? How many hours would you be short if they didn't have the 60 hours?
Yeah, George, I'm sorry, chief, could you come to the mic?
As some of the council know, that there's currently an investigation going on, and I'm down one full officer.
But if he were to come back, like, if we only extended this through November and he would come back, or he wouldn't come back, what are you, like, are you covered for the part-timers through the end of the year? Because you said that, like, all vacation was included in that, in that spreadsheet, so is there a shortage? Like, I didn't see where you would be missing people, or are they all covered?
Well, it's, if you go by the policy handbook, it's up to the chief whether he allows vacation to be carried over from year to year. And right now, I have officers who still have a good amount of vacation time that can be carried over to year to year. So I have one corporal who still has 500 hours vacation time. So if he takes all his vacation, then no, I won't be. I mean.
Okay, I have, I have, I have a comment. Are you implying that he could walk into your office tomorrow and say, I want to take 500 hours of vacation, starting next week until whenever all that time runs out? Because here, here's my issue, chief. Like, last month, we asked about the hours of vacation.
Scotty, ask the question. The question is, can an officer come in and ask for, to use his vacation time?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay, who approves that vacation?
I don't.
And you, so someone with 500 hours of vacation left in, in, in 2021, walked into your office on October 18th and said, I'm taking 500 hours of vacation, starting October 24th, this Sunday. You would say, you would have to say yes to that, or you would say yes to that? See, here's my problem, is last month, chief, we asked you about the vacation, and you gave us a number of 1,200 hours. I find it incredibly hard to believe that you have to cover 1,200 hours of vacation between now and December 31st. Do you have to cover 1,200 hours between now and December 31st?
The possibility.
Because that's what you implied, that's what you implied. Well, it's a possibility, but, I mean, you're the one that, you're the one that can approve it, so, like, would you approve that? I mean, that's, that is, there's such a gray area right there, it's, like, what's the
Are we done? We heard there's about six questions in there. The hours are on the books. The idea has always been that you try to get the officers to use their time during the year as much as possible, because you don't want the officers to continue to stock up hours, so when they go to retire, you have to pay them a big payout. Or, like, one of my last officers who retired, didn't work for about four or five months because he had time saved up. So there's a, there's a lot of different possibilities that are in there that you have to prepare for.
Okay, so are you going to have the budget for, for coverage for 1,200 hours of vacation between now and December 31st?
I would probably say no for the whole 1,200 hours, but.
How many of those 1,200?
I don't know.
You're, you're in charge of them, though. You're the one that schedules or approves their vacations.
Okay, but do you also understand that it's not in the contract? The contracts that they've had for the last million years do not allow management to be able to control those issues. And so what ends up happening if an officer comes in and says, I would like to take off the next six weeks?
Uh huh.
There's nothing in the contract that says no. So where does that, excuse me.
You tell them though.
So what ends up happening is now comes before you guys as a grievance, which I tried, and I have been very, very successful in the last eight years, to avoid those grievances. So what I'm trying to do is have the manpower necessary if I can, if my officers would like to take their time off. Some officers have felt very badly about taking time off during the virus and during the summertime, although our manpower has not been good. So if one of them comes to me and says, yeah, I'd like to take off, I'd like to be able to reward them with the time that they have earned.
Did you ever think of instituting a mandatory policy for part-timers, like some departments have around here? For example, Yardley has a, has a, has a policy. If you're a part-timer on their roster, you work one shift per pay period, or you're no longer on the roster. And I believe the chief in Yardley is actually the one that instituted that. Is that something you've ever thought about doing? Because we have people on the part-time roster, Lovitzki's still on the part-time roster, he quit three months ago.
No, he's not.
Lovitzki is no longer anywhere on any, any rosters of ours in Morrisville.
He is no longer an officer in Morrisville.
I, is he, but does he, could, could you construe that he's still an officer by seeing his name somewhere on a roster anywhere? Or has he been permanently removed?
He is no longer an officer in the Morrisville borough.
Okay, I'm aware of that. I know he quit a few months ago.
Oh, Scott, now can we get back to, Scott, that sheet that we saw did not come from the chief?
Came from me. That was an error from the borough office.
That sheet, that, that sheet we saw did not come from the chief. That, that was an internal borough thing, so it's not on the chief that, that you're talking about.
Okay. I just, I don't understand why we have all these part-timers that aren't even, that don't even work. Like, you, you say, listen, you want to be, you want to call yourself a martial police officer, you want to be on, you want to be on our roster, you have to work, and.
All right, let's, let's try to get back on top.
I just want to, chief, so I'm, I'm reading the officer's contract, and it says that approval of all vacation schedules are at the discretion of the chief. Requests for scheduling of vacation days must be submitted to the chief no later than 45 days prior to the requested beginning date of such vacation. The parties recognize that shift scheduling may not be established as of the date of an employee submits a request for scheduling of vacation. Accordingly, this subsection shall not be construed to prohibit approval from the chief of police of a requested vacation schedule submitted less than 45 days prior to the requested beginning date of vacation. So if I'm reading this correctly, they can't come to you and expect to get their vacation if it's within 45 days, correct?
That's in the contract.
Right.
But that is not what happens.
That, that would be considered annual, if you want to play devil's advocate, and I want to argue against that. That would be annual pre-planned vacations.
No, that contract is horrible.
I agree with you on that one.
Okay, that contract is so archaic, and I've asked for years to have a real contract put into effect, and it's not. So that says that if you want to take off Friday night, 45 days from now.
Yeah.
You can put in for it. But if you want to take off this Friday night because you want to have a date with your wife, no, officer, you can't do that. You had to give me that 45 days ago.
Right, but if, for these purposes where some officer has 500 hours, you can say no to it. Like, I'm not talking about the random day.
You're being very unrealistic, and truthfully, you have to have a manager that knows what he's doing, and that's what I do. And I manage these guys very, very well.
So when are we having this extension extended to?
Well, I don't want to get into a situation where we did before, where these part-timers are working full-time hours forever, and then, and then we have a problem like we did with the other officer.
We don't have a problem like we did with the officer, because if you remember right, Chris Gerber came in and told you, there is no lawsuit, because we didn't have a problem.
But it was a potential one.
There isn't. Either you do have one or you don't have one. We don't have one.
I don't want to open ourselves up for one, though.
Okay, well, you're not, I'm sorry, man, but you're not a lawyer.
No, I'm not.
And we're not going to open ourselves up to one, because we're under the, the numbers altogether for the whole borough, for the number of employees and the number of hours they work. That's why we don't have a lawsuit.
Well, my suggestion is not, is to go through, I don't know, November, end of November? End of December?
If we're going to go through the end of November, then just, let's do that now at 10:35, and then we'll come back next month, and then we'll add another five weeks. So if that's what this majority wants to do, they're, they're comfortable with going longer or further, then just make it November 30th, and then I'll see you next month, and we'll have the same motion on the table.
All right, so I heard November 30th.
And you also heard January 2nd, 2022.
I have to be realistic, too.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to call for, sorry, all right, somebody makes a, makes a motion, and then we'll add the date to it.
I'll make the motion regarding a request for a temporary waiver of the 60-hour limit for part-time police officers through November 30th, 2021.
Drop action, Edison.
All right, so we have a motion to extend it through November 30th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Do we need any more further discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion passes six one. Nine K, call for a motion to approve settlement of a tax appeal regarding Rivertown Development, Bless you, Development LLC, tax parcel number 24-009-1922, East Bridge Street, Morrisville, PA. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion.
Mr. President, can we have this solicitor tell the public what this is about?
Sure. Go ahead, sir.
This is to East Bridge Street. This is the former Wells Fargo Bank Building. Developer bought it in July of last year. It's been appraised on behalf of the developer. The number came in, this was negotiated between the school district and the developer, and the property owner, and they came in with an assessed value of about $35,000. This is what it's going to be lowered to.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. A call for a motion, a call for a potential motion after discussion regarding the zoning hearing notice for Morrisville School District Building at 50 Penn Avenue, Morrisville, PA, 19067, BCBMP, 24-012-077, on whether council will or will not direct the solicitor to attend on behalf of the borough.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I just was wondering, have, has this school, I have, you know, trust in the school district and the, and the current school board, and I'm very happy to know that someone's interested in the property after sitting so long, but I'm guessing they've been thoroughly vetted, this school that's coming in. So that's, that was only my, only concern.
If I may, council president and council, this is purely on here for procedural purposes because of the fact that they are appearing in front of the zoning hearing board. Normally, it would be at the pleasure of council to decide whether they would want to send their solicitor or not, to either be for this or for against it. So it's purely procedural.
Well, so we would have to tell the council whether, how we are, like, he has to represent whether we're for or against it, right?
Correct. So if council is, is for the development that will possibly take place, if it's approved through the zoning hearing board, they would certainly not send the solicitor. If they're opposed to it, they would request the solicitor to be present to defend the reasons that council is against it.
Well, I, I'm not sure what kind of school this is. I know I've, I've seen it's a nursing school, but is it a nursing school, or is it a training center for people if they are unemployed, or are they, like, I'm not clear what the business is.
I wished I had Googled it better, but Alpha Career Institute LLC. The petitioner intends to use the property as a school for nurses, medical assistants, and medical billing. So that's the purpose. Does anyone know?
Just, this is a point of order, I, I want to make sure I'm on the right page. All, all we're doing here is, it's a question of whether or not we feel like we need to send the solicitor to our zoning hearing board, correct?
Yes, but we have to know our stance, but yes, I think that's right.
I mean, I was going to go to the meeting on the first in order to learn more about them, so it's hard for me to make a decision, yea or nay, without having more details about what it is that, like, what is the zoning?
I can answer that question, at least. The relief being requested is the type of school they're using. Under our zoning ordinance, we have two definitions of schools. There's your traditional educational schools that are one-use, and there are vocational schools, such as this, which is what this one would fall under, that are a different use, and just because of where the property is zoned, that use is not permitted, the vocational schools. Only the traditional elementary, secondary schools are permitted in the zone.
So that seems like a small building for training. Like, I don't know what's going to be going on there in order to make a decision, what.
Again, this is, this is just put on for your edification, your ability to look at the issue. If you don't want us to go, we have no problem with that. We have no stake in this.
Right, and the zoning hearing board is represented by their own council, too, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Unless, unless, you know, our recommendation as solicitors of us, unless you have severe concerns about the issue, there's no reason to send us. Unless you're willing, unless you're going there to oppose it, and there needs to be legal argument made, there's no reason for us to attend. This is just on there, more from a procedural standpoint, to let everyone know that it's out there, you have this option. There's nothing from either our office or the administration that says you need to go.
You made a great case, Scott.
I think filling it, I think I'd say we don't have to send our attorney, all right?
Nope.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so we're not going to move it forward to a motion, so we're just going to move on then.
Okay.
So nine M and nine N were basically the same motion, so we're, we're going to combine these. So nine M and N is a call for a motion.
By the way, Mr. Parker, I don't mean to interrupt, but, I mean, it was pointing out to, since I pointed out that I thought these were duplicative, it was also pointing out to me that these are referring to motions respectively of the Blighted Property Review Committee and of the Planning Commission. I don't understand why we, why we are, we are being asked to adopt resolutions adopted by them, aren't we? I mean, the planning person made a recommendation to us, and we can act on that, and the Blighted Property Committee, I mean, operates independent of council, no? So I'm.
Yeah, we, well, yes and no. I mean, the best way to put this is, these are recommendations, but they're also their own things, so I bet, I think the best way to put it is, the motion you would be doing here, if we take nine M and nine N, is you would call for a motion to identify 29 North Lafayette Avenue as blighted, as provided in the resolutions by the vacant block, vacant Blighted Property Review Committee and the Morrisville Borough Planning Commission.
Okay, that makes more sense to me, yeah.
Yeah.
I like that. So moved.
Do I just read it?
You're good, I'll read it.
You're going to read it? All right, go ahead.
Was that Councilman Jaeger with the second?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Could you read the motion one more time?
Yeah, sure. It's a call... It's a motion to identify 29... Take this off for this. Excuse me, sorry. It's a call for a motion to identify 29 North Lafayette Avenue as blighted as provided in the resolutions of the vacant Blighted Property Review Committee and the Morrisville Borough Planning Commission. And we had a motion by Councilman Sherlock and a second by Councilman Jaeger.
I do a quick question, though. I'm sorry, before the vote. You did not mention the parcel number. Is that necessary for the...
Not necessarily the motion, but the parcel number is 24-6-153.
I don't mean to nitpick either, Scott, but for the word... You use the word provided. Shouldn't we use recommended? Or is that...
They're not exactly recommendations. They are part...
They are, they're resolutions.
They're their own resolutions, correct.
Okay.
They are their own process. They are their own step.
Yeah, I'll defer to you on the language then, fine.
Although the contents remain the same since we've changed the resolution, are we need to open public comment?
No, the subject matter is the same.
And I think you actually mentioned at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, I did it before. But I... There was some wording change, but we do that, not strictly open public comment. All right, any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. All right, you're going to do the next one?
Yeah, I'll do the next one. This is going to... This is the combined 9O... Yes, 9O and 9P. Call for a motion to identify 208 East Pollard Street, Tax Map Parcel Number 24-8-559, as blighted as provided in the resolutions from the vacant Blighted Property Review Committee and the Morrisville Borough Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
9Q and 9R, call for a motion to identify 327 Prospect Avenue, Tax Map Parcel Number 24-4-572.001, as blighted as provided in the resolutions from the vacant Blighted Property Review Committee and the Morrisville Borough Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, and the fourth one, 9S and 9T, this is you're going to call for a motion to identify 831 Crown Street, Tax Map Parcel Number 24-7-51, as blighted as provided in the resolutions from the vacant Blighted Property Review Committee and the Morrisville Borough Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just one comment I was going to make on all these. All these have been on the Keystone Report for a long time, probably six months, probably over a year for some of them. So as we kind of move through these quickly, they're not new to us.
Right. Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Scott. 9U, call for a motion to approve library roof replacement project change order number one. Aluminum gutters and downspouts are to be used in lieu of galvanized steel with no associated change in costs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a quick discussion. Are we saying that aluminum gutters cost as much as galvanized steel?
What we're saying is that the contractor will provide these items for the same cost due to the fact that there's some issues that when I reviewed the bid information, we would now have to paint them. There would be added cost in painting and so forth. So we had asked the contractor if he would install this at the same price, and he did agree.
Well, aluminum definitely is much more maintenance-free, friendly. So... But I thought that the cost would have been much higher, and we didn't... And we're not getting anything back.
It most likely would have been higher, so we are... We agreed to follow through with this process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Mr. President, point of order, Mr. Paul was not here for the vote.
No, I didn't see him walk out.
6-0.
It's 6-0, that's what I... Yeah, I did say... Sorry if you didn't hear me. Yeah, I did say 6-0. All right.
Final one of the night, right?
And I have a couple more. 9V, call for a motion to approve presentation... Preparation, sorry, for a pre-application of a FEMA... HMGP grant opportunity... Opportunity regarding flood mitigation assistance along with utilizing flood study funding to cover the costs in pursuing the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Just a question. In the paperwork that we received, it says, as we understand the program this time, there is a 75% federal contribution and a 25% state contribution. And Pennsylvania is paying 22% of the required 25, leaving only 3% to be paid by the municipality. That's as they understand it at this time. Will that change? I mean, this is sort of like an unknown that we're agreeing to.
The reason for this to be on the agenda this evening is because a pre-application was required. With that preapplication, once we move a little bit further into the process, we'll certainly know more information. But they did require it as a preapplication, and I felt very confident that once we get more information, we can certainly backtrack.
And we could withdraw if we have to refund that too costly, right?
Correct, correct. And all of these items are basically related to things that are needed in the floodplain zone. So that's really what this is all about.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right, 9W was done in the beginning, so we are done with action items. 10 Other Business, 10A Informational Only, Special Meeting Notice.
Notice, the reading?
I'm going to read the notice. It says, notices hereby given that the Borough of Morrisville will hold special meetings on the following dates and times. Tuesday, October 19, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 20, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., if necessary. Monday, October 25, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., if necessary. Tuesday, October 26, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., if necessary. The following meetings, October 20, 25, and October 26, 2021, may be canceled at the discretion of council should council determine that the Borough business necessitating the special meetings has been completed at the prior budget meetings. Should the October 20, 25, and October 26, 2021, meetings be canceled, such cancellations will be announced prior to the adjournment of the prior meeting. And notice of due cancellation will also be posted on the Morrisville Borough Hall, 35 West Union Street, Morrisville, PA 19067, in the outdoor kiosks and on the Borough's website calendar. All meetings will be held at the Morrisville Borough Hall, 35 Union Street, Morrisville, Pennsylvania 19067, and will be held for the following reasons. One, to discuss and advertise a preliminary 2022 budget for the Borough. Two, to take any and all actions deemed necessary by council in order to balance and approve a final budget, including considerations of a resolution to petition the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas to collect a tax exceeding 30 mils, if necessary. And three, to conduct any other business council may deem appropriate. Any questions? Or if you are a person with a disability and wish to attend any meeting, require an auxiliary aid service or other accommodations to participate in the proceedings, please contact the Borough Manager at 215-295-8181 to discuss how the Borough of Morrisville may best accommodate your needs. Judith A. Danko, Borough Manager.
I thought you were just going to give the dates. Good for you.
You told me to read it.
I just thought you were going to give the dates.
Sounds like I was doing the evening news. All right, do I need to do anything more with that? Okay. Borough officials?
I'm going to be brief. All I want to talk about is the library. We're still selling chances on the picture. And please, you can visit the library or the hardware store, and they have the raffle tickets. So the whole idea behind this is that we can raise enough money to work towards getting the library an historical designation. So... And then the Salem Witch Trials, which was scheduled, has been canceled, but you can register online. The annual Halloween party was also canceled, but they'll be giving out goodie bags. And in October, youngsters can participate in a scavenger hunt. The bags are being provided by the library. And then there's the virtual decluttering your home presented on December 8. So those are just the library, you know, updates. The library board is considering a pumpkin carving at the park on October 30 from 5 to 7 p.m. More details to follow.
Anyone else have anything?
Mr. President, I have one quick announcement.
Go ahead, sir.
On October 23, the Friends of Morrisville Dog Park will be hosting a Monster March Dog Halloween Parade